Good morning and welcome to the public hearing and public meeting of June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance and I'll turn it over to our general counsel, Mark Silverman, to call the role.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Luthy.
Here.
Commissioner Master.
Here.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
All right. Good morning again and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of June sixth. Uh, we're going to, this meeting is being held uh via Zoom and live streamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to testify in any of our public hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time for the item you're interested in, which can be found on our website. Uh, which can be found on our, our uh agenda, which can be found on our website. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so at our YouTube channel. And we're going to begin this morning with a uh public hearing for three proposals from the research department that I'm very excited about.
Muted. Yeah, it's not Sarah's frozen.
And so for those public meeting items, we will open up the hearing to allow the applicant to present and to take a public testimony. And then after that, we will move to our public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated properties. With that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Kate Leemus-McHale, to take us through our public hearing agenda for the research department.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we're going to start with three public hearings um for three uh proposed landmarks that are associated with important jazz history and individuals. And these were prioritized as part of the research department's work to identify potential landmarks throughout the city with significant African-American history. Um, and these buildings really have extraordinary cultural significance. And we're pleased to propose them together as the research has continued on all of these. It's, it's just very um, it's an important group of buildings that really represent towering figures in jazz and also a really interesting range of periods um in the development of jazz and ways of contributing to it as it became a significant American art form. Um, and so we're delighted to present these this morning. The first uh is LP two six seven zero nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue Building at nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue, AKA nine twenty-nine to nine thirty-nine Saint Nicholas Avenue, four sixty-two to four sixty-six West one fifty-seventh Street, Manhattan Block two one oh seven Lot seventy-two. Uh, the item to be heard is a Gothic Revival-style apartment building, built in nineteen fifteen and designed by architects Bronberg and Luchtag, which for many years was home to legendary jazz musicians Duke Ellington and Noble Sissel. Presenting this morning is Terry Noonan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue is located prominently on the corner of West one hundred and fifty-seventh Avenue and Saint Nicholas Avenue in Washington Heights, Manhattan. It is a Gothic Revival-style brick limestone and terracotta apartment building, designed by the firm of Cronenberg and Cronenberg and Luchtag in nineteen fifteen. The distinguished building is architecturally significant as an intact example of early twentieth-century apartment building design. It is also culturally significant as the home of more than twenty years each of Edward Duke Ellington and Noble Lee Sissel, two pioneers of jazz music, who were among the most prolific composers, musicians, and bandleaders in American history. Next slide, please. It is located at the corner of Saint Nicholas Avenue and West one hundred and fifty-seventh Street. The proposed landmark site is its tax lot, located just one block north of Hamilton Heights Sugar Hill Northwest in Hamilton Heights, Sugar Hill Northeast Historic Districts. Next slide, please. The building was built in nineteen fifteen and despite the flourishing of the Harlem Renaissance in the nineteen twenties, census records indicate that it was not until the mid nineteen thirties that the demographics of its tenants began to shift from predominantly immigrants from Russia, Germany, Austria, and Poland to African-American residents. Jazz pianists and composer Duke Ellington resided in the building from nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen sixty-one, a period of over twenty years at the height of his prolific career. Noble Lee Sissel, a noted ragtime jazz musician and music producer, resided here from nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy-two, during the latter part of his career when he remained a significant and influential figure in Harlem and in the performing arts. Next slide, please. Both Noble Sissel and Duke Ellington were successful composers and bandleaders. The photo on the left from nineteen twenty-nine features Noble Sissel and his orchestra. The photo on the right from nineteen forty-three, taken by famous photographer Gordon Parks, is of Duke Ellington and his band. Next slide, please. Born in Washington DC, Duke Ellington, eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen seventy-four, was one of America's most prolific and innovative jazz orchestra leaders. From the start of his career in New York in nineteen twenty-three until his death in nineteen twenty seventy-four, he composed over three thousand songs in his lifetime. In nineteen thirty-nine, Ellington moved into an apartment at nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue with his family. During this time, in the building in the nineteen forties and fifties, Ellington wrote many songs that have become American jazz standards, such as We'll Take, I'll Take the A Train, Sophisticated Ladies, Satin Dow, I Don't Get Around Much Anymore, and I Let a Song Go Out of My Heart. Ellington also composed many musical suites, consisting of pieces that were linked by subject matter, including Black Brown and Beige, composed in nineteen forty-three, Betrayal of African-American History, Liberian Suite in nineteen forty-seven, and A Drum Is a Woman in nineteen fifty-six. And he also created music for film and television scores. Ellington received accolades and awards throughout his illustrious career. He was on the cover of Time Magazine in nineteen fifty-six while he lived on Saint Nicholas Avenue, and would later be awarded the Grammy Lifetime Achievement Award in nineteen sixty-six and the Presidential Medal of Freedom in nineteen sixty-nine, among many other accolades. Next slide, please. Noble Lee Sissel, eighteen ninety-nine and nineteen seventy-five, was born in Indianapolis and moved to New York in nineteen sixteen. During World War One, Sissel was a member of the three sixty-ninth Regimental Band organized by James Reese Europe and part of the American regiment known as the Harlem Hellfighters. Sissel began to collaborate with U.B. Blake around nineteen fourteen. Their first musical Shuffle Along opened in nineteen twenty-run and ran for two years. It was the first successful Broadway musical with an all-black cast. This musical introduced such songs as I'm Just Wild About Harry, which would later become the campaign song for President Harry S. Truman, Loveful Find a Way, and Simply Full of Jazz, and many more. Next slide, please. Sissel later formed his own orchestra, which toured Europe and the US in the nineteen thirties through the nineteen fifties and appeared in movies and television shows. In nineteen thirty-seven, Sissel founded the Negro Actors Guild of America, an organization established to try to eliminate stereotyping of African-Americans in theatrical and cinematic performances. Sissel was president of this guild from nineteen thirty-seven to nineteen fifty-seven. Duke Ellington was an organization's co-vice president along with Ethel Waters and Marion Anderson. Many prominent members of the Negro Actors Guild are associated with designated buildings. Ethel Waters resided in Adorance Brooks Historic District. Marion Anderson resided in the Beaumont Apartments, an individual landmark. Paul Robeson lived in the designated Dunbar Apartments in Harlem. W.C. Handy lived in Saint Nicholas Historic Districts, and of course Louis Armstrong's home is an individual landmark in Queens. During the time that Sissel lived at nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue, he became known as the unofficial mayor of Harlem, writing many articles for the New York Age and the New York Amsterdam News. And he had a radio show at, on WMGM from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen seventy-one. Next slide, please. The building built nineteen fifteen was designed by the architectural firm of Herman Cronenberg and Albert Luchtag, who formed a successful partnership in the first decades of the twentieth century. Specializing in apartment buildings, their designs are represented in several historic districts, including Central Park West, Greenwich Village, Riverside West End, and West End Collegiate Historic Districts. Their use of the Neo-Gothic Revival style for this building was rare for the firm since they favored the Neo-Renaissance and the Neo-Romanesque styles, and it stands out in the neighborhood. This handsome building is highly intact and features textured brickwork and elaborate terracotta details. Nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue was listed on the National Historic Landmark in nineteen seventy-six. Thank you. Nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue is architecturally and culturally significant as a reflection of Harlem's history in the twentieth century and the history of jazz as an American art form. It retains a high degree of integrity to its period of construction and to the mid-twentieth-century period for when the building was home to jazz leaders Duke Ellington and Noble Sissel for more than twenty years each. For these reasons, nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue is proposed for designation as an individual landmark. Thank you. You're muted. Fair, fair Carol.
All right, can, sorry about that. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, let's uh. Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move to public testimony. And so if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Lisa Crisavage, our executive director, to take us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we have two people signed up uh to speak. Uh, we'll start with Wayne Benjamin. Okay, Mr. Benjamin, uh, we've brought you in. If you could, there we go. And please do state your name for the record.
Sure, uh, thank you and good morning. Uh, my name is Wayne Benjamin. I'm an architect and I serve as the chair of the Land Use Committee for Manhattan Community Board Twelve, which serves Washington Heights and Inwood. On May third, the Land Use Committee unanimously passed a resolution and supported the designation of nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas as an individual landmark building. And on May twenty-third, the full board unanimously adopted that resolution. Our support for the designation of nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas acknowledges the architectural significance of the building and its Gothic Revival design by a firm that was prolific in the early part of the twentieth century that specialized in the design of apartment buildings. However, for CB twelve, the building's cultural significance, given its association with two celebrated African-Americans who were pioneers of jazz, that being Duke Ellington and Noble Sissel, is of greater importance. Further, nine thirty-five's listing on the National Register of Historic Places nearly a half-century ago exemplifies that cultural significance. In January of twenty twenty-one, CB twelve passed a resolution urging the Landmarks Preservation Commission to engage in ongoing dialogue with it and other community stakeholders to advance the designation of historic structures and districts in Washington Heights and Inwood and to ensure that the history, culture, contributions, and legacy of people and communities of color are recognized, acknowledged, and preserved. We welcome the designation of nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas as an action that is consistent with and a step towards addressing our twenty twenty-one resolution. We support this designation without reservation and urge LPC to continue to identify and designate sites of importance to the city's diverse communities of color.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we'll call Historic Districts Council. And as I'm doing that, if anybody else would like to speak, uh, please do raise your virtual hand and I'll call on you. Okay, Historic Districts Council, I've brought you in. Just need to unmute yourself and turn on your video if you choose.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, HDC enthusiastically supports the designation of nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue as an individual landmark. As home to both Duke Ellington and Noble Sissel from the nineteen thirties through the nineteen seventies, nine thirty-five Saint Nicholas Avenue embodies a history of jazz, American popular music, and black placemaking in Harlem that shaped the city and the nation. Ellington's astounding catalog of more than three thousand compositions was recognized with the Presidential Medal of Freedom. Sissel, who was dubbed the mayor of Harlem, served as part of the Harlem Hellfighters Regimental Band during World War One, co-wrote the first successful Broadway musical featuring an all-black cast and founded the Negro Actors Guild, which Ellington served as co-vice president. The remarkable cultural history that played out in this building and therefore the stories this structure can tell about twentieth-century Harlem are profoundly worthy of preservation. HDC is glad to see LPC continue its work toward recognizing sites of cultural history. HDC has long been a champion of cultural landmarks. In fact, this year, our preservation conference was titled Looking Beyond Landmarks and focused on sites of cultural significance, public art, and memorialization. We hope that LPC will continue to consider many more sites of cultural significance throughout the five boroughs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And don't see any other hands raised. Um, so I'll turn, I think that concludes the testimony. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Item number two um is the John.
Um, hold on one second. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I have to close the hearing.
So, and before we do that, I think we did have another question from Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah, this is, this is so wonderful. But, but I have a trivial question, very trivial. What floor did Duke Ellington live on?
Ah, well, we have him on the fourth floor. Terry can confirm. And research has also shown that when he moved in, the whole band took over the fourth floor as their place um to be in between shows.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so not seeing any other questions, I'm gonna ask you all to unmute so we can make a motion to close the hearing. All right, and Commissioner Luthy, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, this hearing is closed and we'll be bringing this back for a vote in the very near future, and we'll now move to the next item.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Item number two is LP two six five seven, the John Burkes Dizzy Gillespie Residence at one oh five dash nineteen thirty-seventh Avenue, AKA thirty-four to sixty-eight one hundred and sixth Street in Corona, Queens, Block seventeen forty-seven, Lot fifty-one. And the item to be heard is a colonial revival-style building uh, which was home to legendary jazz trumpeter John Burkes Dizzy Gillespie from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen sixty-five. And presenting this item again is Teresa Noonan.
Well, again, legendary jazz trumpeter John Burkes Dizzy Gillespie, nineteen seventy, nineteen seventeen to nineteen seventy-three, purchased this three-story multifamily residence in Corona, Queens at the height of his career in nineteen fifty-three and lived here until nineteen sixty-five. Beyond being Dizzy Gillespie's home for the longest period of association in any New York City building, it also held a rehearsal space that became a place of music production and a gathering space for his band. It is culturally significant for its strong association with Dizzy Gillespie and his indelible contributions to the history and culture. Next slide, please. The John Burkes Dizzy Gillespie Residence is located on the corner of Thirty-seventh Avenue and Hundred and Sixth Street, just around the corner from the Louis Armstrong House, a designated New York City landmark. Next slide, please. Built on the corner of Hundred and Sixth Street in nineteen twenty-two as a single-family residence, one oh five nineteen thirty-seventh Avenue was converted to a three-story, three-family residence around nineteen forty. Gillespie purchased the building in nineteen fifty-three and lived in an apartment with the entrance on Hundred and Sixth Street. At the time, Corona was developing into an important African-American community, attracting notable musicians, including Gillespie and his friend around the corner, Louis Armstrong, who settled there in nineteen forty-three. Shown here are Louis Armstrong, Jimmy McFarlane, and Bobby Hackett at Dizzy's House in Corona. Research indicates that many jazz musicians congregated in the basement rehearsal studio of Dizzy Gillespie's plush two-story apartment. Next slide, please. Dizzy Gillespie was born in nineteen seventeen and is best remembered as the co-founder of the revolutionary jazz-style bebop with Charlie Parker, as well as his contributions to the development of Afro-Cuban jazz. Some of his most celebrated early compositions include Groovin' High, Salt Peanuts, and End a Night in Tunisia. Gillespie lived here in the nineteen fifties and the sixties with his wife Lorraine, who also served as his personal manager. During this period, he adopted his signature bent trumpet and released and performed in a succession of memorable albums, including Jazz at Massey Hall in nineteen fifty-four, Afro in nineteen fifty-four, World Statesman in nineteen fifty-six, and A Portrait of Duke Ellington in nineteen sixty, and Jumbo Caribe in nineteen sixty-four. Next slide. While he resided in Corona, the US State Department asked Gillespie to be the nation's first ambassador in nineteen fifty-six. Conceived during the Cold War to promote American culture and democratic values, his big band traveled extensively, performing to great acclaim in Europe, the Middle East, and South America. Following his return, he appeared on Edward R. Merle's Personal Persons, a CBS interview program that was broadcast live from Dizzy Gillespie's home in Corona. Members of the band included Billy Mitchell, Joe Gordon, Frank Rehag, Quincy Jones, Charles Persip, and Carl Warwick. Next slide, please. Dizzy Gillespie appeared at the historic first Newport Jazz Festival in July of nineteen fifty-four, among others. He won many national and international awards, including during his six-day, decade-long career, entering Downbait's magazine Hall of Fame in nineteen sixty. Next slide, please. In nineteen sixty, Dizzy wrote his first version of his autobiography entitled Crazy Like a Fox while living at his Corona home, and he started his short-lived run for the presidency in nineteen sixty-four while residing at this property to draw more attention to civil and voting rights. He used the rehearsal space in his basement for his composing and also for his band members. Tenor saxophone is born, uh, Benny Coulson recalled when he joined Dizzy's band in nineteen fifty-six that he visited Dizzy's home on several occasions. Junior Mace recalled his times in Dizzy Gillespie's band from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-five, probably my most profound learning experience. I remember spending several years, an hour, excuse me, at a time in his basement studio being shown chord changes that I never knew existed. Next slide, please. A nineteen sixty article in the New York Daily News commented that Dizzy lived and owned an apartment in Corona, Queens, and because he lived there, it's a mighty cool neighborhood. Dizzy Gillespie lived here until nineteen sixty-five and retained ownership of the building until nineteen eighty-five. He died in nineteen ninety-three and is buried in Queens in nearby Flushing Cemetery. The house retains its original form, the modest colonial revival style, with only minor changes, including replacement of the original doors and windows. Since the time Dizzy lived here, it is therefore an excellent integrity to its period of cultural significance. Because of this significance, as the home of the legendary composer and bandleader and performer Dizzy Gillespie, the John Burkes Dizzy Gillespie Residence is proposed for designation as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. All right, do we have any questions for Kate or Terry on this one? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Lisa Crisavage to take us through the testimony.
Okay, great. Um, I'm going to start with, we're gonna go through the signup list. Um, so I'm gonna start with Kayla Mann. Okay, Kayla. There we go. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your video if you choose to. Okay, Kayla.
Yeah.
Yeah, and please do state your name for the record.
Yeah, Kayla Mann. I'm the daughter of the owner.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start.
I'm sorry, for some reason the, the video doesn't work properly. Um, trying to fix that. One moment, please.
Okay.
Let's just do this.
Okay, I'm gonna just warn you, you're upside down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just stop.
Okay, you don't have to use video too if you don't want to.
Okay, 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 let's just do this. I know your time is um very, you know, limited. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so um, yeah, I understand that Dizzy Gispell, um, he has been living there for, Gillespie has been living there for a while and um ever since nineteen fifty-three, was purchased in nineteen sixty-five. Um, as you could see, this building is insignificant outside looking wise. It's not, doesn't have any history to it. It's pretty much a red brick building. There is no um, no, as you could see, there's, there's no elaborate architecture involved in this. I understand that he's been living there for a while and there is historical in, um, influence in this neighborhood. Um, Louis Armstrong's building is located a few blocks away. We're aware of that, but um, again, as I'm, I believe I, I spoke with you yesterday um, in regards to this matter, my father is a small landlord. He owns this building as an investment. He's sixty-seven years old at this, at the moment. He's looking to sell it sometime soon for his retirement. And um, this will be a major, major role this, to his, to his retirement. Um, right now, I, I understand the historical significance of the area and what happened at the time, and it's very interesting. But at the same time, this will be a major, take a major role in his life as he's as he's trying, you know, he will eventually sell this off and retire. I don't know what he's planning on doing with the money, but that's his retirement right there. He's self-employed and he has no 401K, so this will be a play, play a major role in his life. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Kayla.
Sorry again.
Oh, thank you very much for your testimony. We don't do questions and answers back and forth. You know, thank you so much. And you know, you can always submit something in writing too if you want to.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm going to call Jake Mancher next. Okay, Jake, I've brought you in as a panelist, you just need to, there you go. And please do state your name for the record.
Sure, can you see me as well?
Yes.
Hi, Jake Mancher, I'm Kayla's brother. And Abby's my father as well. I just want to reiterate some of what Kayla shared. My father has owned this property for about 30 years. He's an immigrant to, to the United States. I was born and raised here before he moved out of the property, moved out of this building. You talked about Corona. It is a neighborhood that has historically been for immigrants. For us, the people who are living there were immigrants as well. As Kayla mentioned, this is a significant part of his retirement plan. By designating this a historic landmark, you're diminishing the value of the property for him and directly impacting his retirement. I've expressed this to Lisa and to the rest of the, some of the people on this panel multiple times that we would not like you to do this. It's, it's counterintuitive to us, it's counterintuitive to our neighborhood, to everybody in the neighborhood that we've spoken to. I'm not sure if there's anybody else on here who is trying to get this through, but this very much is not the type of neighborhood that you landmark a building like this and it has no historical significance, like historical exterior significance or architectural significance. So I'm just trying to reiterate what my sister said and just, and apparently you guys, please don't, go ahead with this. If you guys care about other people and their livelihood, I would really appreciate that this doesn't move forward. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your statement. Okay, let's go to Historic Districts Council.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine, I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, HDC enthusiastically supports the designation of the John Burks Dizzy Gillespie residence as an individual landmark. Gillespie was so clearly understood as a symbol of American cultural creativity that the U.S. State Department chose Gillespie to be the nation's first jazz ambassador in 1956. Gillespie not only traveled extensively with his 18-piece band, but also he recorded and broadcasted directly from his home here in Queens. It is long past due for Gillespie's home to be recognized as the landmark that it is. HDC is glad that this home will join the Louis Armstrong House as a landmark in Corona, and we urge the LPC to continue to recognize sites of cultural significance and particularly sites of Black history in Queens and throughout the five boroughs. As the OPC continues to recognize cultural sites, we would appreciate more guidance from the Commission as to what constitutes eligibility for a cultural landmark. We believe such a distinction can be interpreted in an excitingly broad range of ways, and we are pleased to see that this designation rightly honors a profoundly culturally significant space that is designed in a fairly simple vernacular form. We hope the Commission will be open to designating more buildings that might be unassuming architecturally, but richly deserving from a cultural standpoint. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, I'll call Steve Reese. And Steve will be followed by Deborah Tyson.
Thank you, this is Steve Reese. And I'm a resident of Jackson Heights. What does place have to do with jazz? With the making of music together with other musicians? Place has everything to do with it. And this place, Queens, was the place where dozens of jazz greats lived. Jazz is a conversation, and to have this musical conversation, you need other musicians. Queens provided the opportunity for that dialogue. You've already mentioned that one block from the building you're considering for landmark status is the home of Lucille and Louis Armstrong. But also in Corona lived Jimmy Heath, Clark Terry, Jimmy Rushing. In East Elmhurst, Elmhurst lived Ray Bryant, Junior Mance, Roy Haynes, and Mel Jackson. In Jackson Heights, where I live, it was home to Benny Goodman, Woody Herman, Mez Mesro, and Glenn Miller. In Jamaica lived Charles Mingus and James P. Johnson. In St. Albans lived John Coltrane, Lester Young, and Mel Waldron. In Sunnyside lived Dick Spiderback. And in Tattersley Park lived dozens and dozens of jazz greats, people whose music is enjoyed by millions all over the world. Just four of these notable musicians are Fats Waller, Count Basie, Mercer Ellington, and Ella Fitzgerald. Although I realize your decision today must be guided by the particular rules for landmark status, I hope that your evaluation of the merits will be influenced by the context, by the human and physical landscape of which Dizzy Gillespie was a very remarkable part. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call Deborah Tyson next. Who will be followed by Francie Scanlon. Hey, Deborah Tyson, we called you in. You just need to turn on your video if you choose and unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm Deborah Tyson, and I'm a founding member of the Corona East Elmhurst Historic Preservation Society. And I must say that we created the organization, came into existence to preserve, promote, and protect the history and legacy of the community. And we've heard from a couple of people who share their testimony that they don't think that the house is worthy of landmark status for a number of reasons. And when, I have to tell you, when we first applied to have the Gillespie House designated as a landmark, we realized not only the significance of the house, but we wanted to keep the, his legacy alive. It's particularly important in a community that is changing so rapidly. When, when I used to, I also must tell you, I used to live on 106th Street. I was a homeowner there for about 20 years, right on the block of the Dizzy Gillespie House. So getting back to what I was saying, as the neighborhood began to change and if people, if there was a significant number of, of African, African-American families, but as the community began to change and people began to move and people died, we saw an increasing influx of, of, you know, Latin American communities, which, you know, also contributed to our communities. However, we were the ones who could tell this story because we were there long enough and there were things that we actually lived through and remembered. So applying, when we applied, we ran into hurdles because we were told that by HD, by LPC that the house was culturally significant, but there was nothing architecturally significant about it. And that is an issue that happens quite often in the borough of Queens because in, in Manhattan, in Brooklyn, you see, you know, these huge, you know, buildings and so on, but that's not often the case in Queens. It just looks like a normal Queens place, a normal Queens home. There's nothing special about it. However, we argued that that should not be the sole criteria. And it's important for the community not only to see that the Dizzy, that the Louis Armstrong House is around the corner, but the other musicians, as it was just shared, who live in Queens and particularly in the Corona area. And another issue, concern we had, how is it possible that the Louis Armstrong House could be considered architecturally significant and the Dizzy Gillespie House not? So it, I'm glad after listening to the testimony to find out, to learn that, that it is now considered architecturally significant. It has always been culturally significant because of the, his contributions to the community and to the world. I am very, very happy to see this moving forward. And the children in the surrounding schools know of the musicians in the area, but it should not, the house should not become like so many homes in the area that are getting torn down so that new homes can replace them and all of the memories are destroyed. And unfortunately, the, the new population that, that are residents here, a lot of them do not speak the language and they do not know the history, so.
Deborah, I'm, I'm sorry, we're kind of well over time.
Okay, yeah, I do apologize.
That's okay.
I'm wrapping up. But at any rate, I'm thankful that you're moving forward and it is my, it is our concern that it will be landmarked. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, and then Francie Scanlon? And if anybody else would like to speak, please do raise your virtual hand. Okay, Francie Scanlon?
Yes, good morning.
Morning, please do state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Francie Scanlon. I had the pleasure and privilege on May 5th of 2023 of leading a James Walk entitled Searching for Dizzy: A Night in Tunisia. That walk was conducted in the Flushing Cemetery in Queens. On that very day, 170 years before that cemetery was given its charter. During that walk, an individual said to me, "Why would anybody want to save that house? What does preservation have anything to do with landmarking?" Well, it's good that I was listening because that commentary was a precursor to what I've just heard this morning. So if I may, from my perspective, let me set the record straight. Louis Armstrong once said with respect to Dizzy Gillespie, "You know him, you know me. You know me, you know him." And indeed, how true those words are, all the more at this very moment. What a glorious transformation of rhyme and history. If indeed this house is landmarked, and how can it not be? How can the NYC LPC, in good faith, landmark Charlie Parker's house, Louis Armstrong's house, and not the home of Dizzy Gillespie? The three, the Trinity, the giants of America's indigenous music? Say it ain't so, but more probitively, why should I say that it should be done? Here's the crux of the argument. In 1956, the United States government, specifically the State Department, knew that we were entering into a treacherous terrain in American history. The Cold War was vastly getting more frozen. And who was our secret stealth weapon? Who was the chief, the leader of the band? None other than Dizzy Gillespie. It was he who had the courage to step up when he was called on, notwithstanding, as he said to the State Department that year, "You don't need to brief me. I know what you've done to my people for more than 300 years." But Dizzy Gillespie heard the call. He stepped up and he was the first jazz ambassador. He helped preserve the transformation of the worldview. He did more than win hearts and minds. He helped fend off and stave off, at such a critical juncture, the need for America to preserve its national security. So by saving this house, you save a portion of American history and you allow the possibility.
Your three minutes are up, could you, are you just about to conclude?
Yes, thank you. So do the right thing. Do it for history, and you know what my hope is? That we can have parity of esteem, that Dizzy's house can become a museum, that the family who has lived there, the immigrant dream can be realized and that the bounty of that sound investment will be capitalized and indeed a foundation will be created and the house will be purchased for a fine number and Dizzy will keep swinging. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And the only other hand I see raised is somebody who already spoke. And we, for testimony, just have people speak once. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach, reach out. I see that this, the hand is raised from the ownership of the building. And with, I don't see any other new speakers with their hands raised.
Okay, Lisa, thank you. And I just want to note that we also received a letter from Assemblyman Aubrey in full support of designating the Dizzy Gillespie residence, which is located in the Members District, as well as a letter from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. So I do want to just address a couple of things that we heard in the testimony. We are, you know, we've had many conversations with the owners and will continue to do so. It's important to us that we ensure that we have provided all the information that we can as we move through the process and that owners are informed. This particular property is overbuilt, so if it was to be demolished, a smaller, only a smaller building could be built. And actually, because it's a sort of simple and modest architecture, probably we anticipate that actually it wouldn't, designation would not have an economic impact on this property. But we respect and understand the personal feelings of owners and we will continue to work and talk to them. and we will continue to work and talk to them and continue to answer questions and provide guidance throughout the process. Um the other thing that I would like to address is the the um issue of how L P C evaluates properties with cultural significance. And so uh first off, there are no applications for designations. These are commission-led initiatives. Um but we do often find out about properties from uh members of the public who have submitted a request for us to evaluate a property. And when we uh received the R F E for this property, we did evaluate it and identify it as um uh something that potentially had cultural significance. Then, as you know, we have um really been focusing on uh the cultural significance of our proposed landmarks and then prioritizing landmarks that represent the full history of New York City and tell the story of all New Yorkers. And so uh many buildings have architectural significance as well, um but not all buildings do, as our speaker uh mentioned, that in some areas, buildings were simply more modest. But that doesn't mean that they don't have cultural or historical significance to the story of and the history of New York City. Uh but when we do then evaluate the property, we look to understand whether the fabric is intact to that period of significance or the period in which it was associated with a person, if it's being considered uh for that connection, and whether that fabric then conveys that significance. And in this case, we did find that the uh integrity in the fabric was um intact and did still convey its appearance and did still retain its appearance uh from the time of Dizzy Gillespie's residence. Um Kate, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that about the research department's work or evaluation process?
I think you covered it very well. I mean, I think we do look at architectural significance. We look at cultural and historical significance. Um we look at how influential a person was um sort of broadly and what kind of impact they had. We look at the length of association somebody has with a property. Um and as you said, we look at the integrity of that property so that it can still represent that important history.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, and again, I do want to thank everybody for participating in this hearing. And I think it's uh wonderful that we have the opportunity to hear uh these opinions. And I think it's very important that we hear from the property owners. And we will, as I said, continue to those conversations as we move through the process. So with that, I'd like to ask us to close the hearing. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we will bring this back for a vote in the near future. And we'll now move to the next item.
Item number three this morning is L P two six seven one, Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building, two oh six West one eighteenth Street, AKA one fifty to one fifty-eight Saint Nicholas Avenue, two oh six to two twelve West one eighteenth Street, Manhattan Block nineteen twenty-three, Lot thirty-eight. Item to be heard is a five-story Renaissance Revival-style hotel, built eighteen ninety-five to ninety-six, where the legendary Harlem Jazz Club Minton's Playhouse flourished for more than three decades. And presenting this morning is Matt Ust.
Good morning. The Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building was built in eighteen ninety-five, ninety-six. It gained cultural significance in the mid-twentieth century when it was home to Minton's Playhouse, a jazz club that flourished for over three decades. Famous for presenting innovative house bands, star headliners, and informal jam session, it was here that the influential jazz style, now known as bebop, took shape in the nineteen forties, transforming the history of American music. Located in Central Hall on the Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building is a five-story structure at the southeast corner of Saint Nicholas Avenue and West one hundred and eighteenth Street. It stands a block west of the Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension and is near various properties that are New York City landmarks, such as the Graham Court Apartments, the Regent Theater, and Wadley High School for Girls. Hotel Cecil was designed in the Renaissance Revival style by Julius F. Monkowitz. Completed in eighteen ninety-six, this residential hotel advertised furnished and unfurnished suites, as well as bachelor apartments. During the era of the Harlem Renaissance, the hotel was slow to welcome black patrons. But by nineteen forty, it had changed course and was listed in consecutive editions of the Negro Motorist Green Book, a popular guide that identified businesses that were friendly to African-American travelers. Trumpeter Miles Davis, who performed at Minton's Playhouse in the mid-nineteen forties, remembered the hotel as first class with rooms that were big and clean. In nineteen thirty-eight or thirty-nine, the hotel's first-floor dining room was converted to a restaurant and bar. Named for the owner, saxophonist and union leader Henry Minton, Minton's Playhouse became a popular and influential uh music venue where many people claim the improvisational jazz style known as bebop was born. In nineteen forty-one, Teddy Hill hired drummer Kenny Clark, who formed a small house band that included the legendary pianist Thelonious Monk. On Monday nights, when most clubs and theaters were dark, informal jam sessions frequently occurred, including such gifted musicians as guitarist Charlie Christian and trumpeter Dizzy Gillespie, who described their performances as "seedbeds for our new modern style of music." In subsequent decades, many important jazz musicians performed here, including Roy Eldridge, Lester Young, Ben Webster, Coleman Hawkins, Carmen McCray, and George Benson. Though critic Ralph Ellison questioned some people's memories of Minton's, in nineteen forty-nine, he described the club as "a sanctuary, a shrine, and a rendezvous in which jazzmen have worked out the secrets of their craft." Throughout the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, Minton's Playhouse continued to be a prominent destination for jazz enthusiasts. Several albums were were recorded on the premises, including performances led by Tony Scott, Stanley Tarantino, and Eddie Lockjaw Davis. The club remained open until nineteen seventy-four, when a fire caused the owner to abandon the building. Due to the significant role that this building played in the history of American music, Minton's Playhouse and the Hotel Cecil were listed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen eighty-five. At the time, the structure was mostly vacant with with storefronts sealed with concrete blocks. The Hotel Cecil was rehabilitated with loans from the Department of Housing Preservation and Development in the late nineteen eighties. At this time, minor modifications were made to both street facades, including the replacement of the original cornice. Now operated as supportive housing for homeless men and women, the structure is well-preserved. It retains many of its original architectural details, as well as the one hundred and eighteenth Street entrance to the legendary jazz club Minton's Playhouse. Due to its cultural significance, the Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building is proposed for designation as an individual landmark.
Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions on this item? All right, we're going to move to public testimony then. If you are in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it back to Lisa Chris Savage to take us through the testimony.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I'm gonna once again start with people who signed up. Um and we're gonna start with Curtis Archer. I'm gonna bring you in as a panelist. Okay, Curtis Archer, just need to unmute and turn your video on if you choose.
Okay, can you uh hear me?
Yes, we can hear and see you. Um and please do state your name for the record.
Yes, uh good morning, folks. My name is Curtis Archer and I'm president of Harlem Community Development Corporation, H C D C, a subsidiary of the New York State Urban Development Corporation, doing business as Empire State Development. I'm speaking to express H C D C's full support for the proposed landmark designation of the Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building. A C D C has owned the building since nineteen eighty-seven and pursuant to a land disposition agreement with the city, has redeveloped the building as a single-room occupancy S R O facility. The building houses eighty-nine S R O dwelling units operated by the Cecil Housing Development Fund Corporation, or Cecil H D F C, an affiliate of Housing and Services, Inc., H S I, a highly regarded nonprofit housing development and management organization. Operated as a residential hotel, the facility often offers furnished apartment suites for long- and short-term stays. A minimum of sixty percent of the units are required to be occupied by referrals from the New York City Shelter System. And this minimum is consistently exceeded under the operational leadership of Cecil Cecil H D F C. The building also, of course, houses the esteemed Minton's Playhouse, a jazz supper club providing live and recorded music, and the Cecil Steakhouse, a restaurant, bar, and lounge, which is soon to reopen. The Cecil is an important fixture within the community, serving as the community gathering place and providing critical social services. H C D C has ensured that the building, which is listed on the New York State and National Registers of Historic Places, is well-preserved and maintained in accordance with the requirements of the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO. We welcome the city's landmark designation recognizing the important history of Minton's Playhouse and its significance to Harlem and jazz. In closing, I would like to reiterate H C D C's full support of the proposed landmark designation, which will help to ensure that this historic and important building will be given the status it most certainly deserves and to further spotlight the amazing and enduring legacy of the community of Harlem. Go Harlem.
Thank you very much for your for your testimony, Mr. Archer.
Bye.
Okay, next, uh Historic Districts Council. Hey, there we go.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, H T C enthusiastically supports the designation of the Hotel Cecil and Minton's Playhouse Building as an individual landmark. This beautiful Renaissance Revival Hotel building stands out not only as a birthplace of modern jazz, but also as a sensitive and laudable example of adaptive reuse and supportive housing. While we know the L P C does not regulate use, we need to feature more examples like this where historic buildings are part of the housing solution. Minton's Playhouse, housed in the building, served as a rendezvous spot for jazz musicians and brought together such talents as Dizzy Gillespie and Thelonious Monk, who pioneered new styles of music after World War Two. This building's owners have long recognized its extraordinary history. For example, this building has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places since nineteen eighty-five, and the building is currently home to a jazz club restaurant called Minton's Playhouse. Beyond recognizing this building's outstanding cultural history, H T C hopes that L P C will also recognize and support this building as a noteworthy example of adaptive reuse and supportive housing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and would anybody else, if anybody else would like to speak, please do raise your virtual hand. Don't see any other hands, so that concludes the testimony.
Great, thank you so much. And again, I would note that uh we received a letter in support from the New York Landmarks Conservancy uh for this item, as well as the prior two items. And uh with that, commissioners, do we have any questions for the team here? All right, not seeing any questions, I'm gonna ask you all to unmute. Yes, Vice Chair Bland, please go ahead.
Um it's not a question, it's a, it's a comment, sort of. Um one of my questions, you answered immediately uh with regard to the Dizzy Gillespie House, that it is overbuilt. And I think that's of of some interest, uh human interest, if not exact uh interest for uh L P C designations. But it was of interest to me, at least, that uh the building is overbuilt. And I, to me, that was significant. The other, the other question I have regarding these, all of them, I suppose, uh revolved around the testimony, I've forgotten of whom, but in the first round, of all the other jazz musicians that were named, uh many of whom, I suppose, I think are were live, you know, where they lived is not designated. And I think in this, what I've described as this slippery slope, although I'm firmly in in the camp of 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 favoring cultural designations, it is a slippery slope. Nonetheless, because we live in New York, every block almost has something of some sort of significance in this great city. But I think it's really important as we move forward to be able to explain, maybe is the word. And I think Sarah, and you started to do so very well in how we look at 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 these buildings, which have perhaps little or no significance architecturally, but great significance culturally. And I just think we need to think about that as we move forward in what I have continued to perhaps erroneously call a slippery slope. It's just commentary, it's nothing to respond to now, I think. But I just wanted to raise that issue.
But well, I do appreciate it and thank you, Fred. And we, you know, we do recognize that important people lived in a lot of places in New York City. We have, you know, an incredible history here and not every building is going to embody or convey that history. And so that's why the research team does have a pretty uh structured set of um criteria that they use when they evaluate it, that evaluate properties that may not have architectural significance, but some association that may merit consideration. And um Kate sort of started to identify those. And I think it's in terms of, you know, the longevity of the connection, the influence of the the person's career or the event at that time um and how widespread that was, um as well as other things. And so I think it's an interesting point that maybe we could um sort of address those criteria a little bit more uh publicly when we present these items.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so with that, I think we'll go ahead and close the hearing on this one. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, this hearing is closed as well. And we will again uh revisit this in the very near future when we schedule a vote. So I want to thank everybody for participating today and thank the research team for their incredible research work on this great collection of uh proposed designations that speak to our cultural uh arts and jazz history and our city's history. So thank you all. And we'll now move to our preservation agendas, starting with our public meeting agenda for the items that were read into the record on May twenty-third. So I'll turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Apartment Agenda with Public Meeting Item Number One, L P C twenty-three dash zero two six six nine. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block twenty-five ninety-five, Lot seventeen, one fifty Collier Street and the Greenpoint Historic District. This is a flats building designed by B E This is a flats building designed by BE Low and built in circa eighteen ninety-three to ninety-four. The application is to alter the facade. As noted, this was read into the record at the public hearing of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, but it was not presented at that time, and no testimony was taken. So we'll do all of that today.
All right. Sorry, I just had a little technical issue with my audio. Can everybody hear me first?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to ask you to unmute so that we can open the hearing for this first item. We'll go ahead and do that. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So now the hearing is open and the applicant may begin.
Okay, Commissioner, the applicant has a hearing. Dominic, I'm going to give you control of the presentation. Please click on your screen.
More, Mike.
And you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please unmute yourselves. Perfect. And you can, and state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hi, good morning, Dominic Casal. Thanks for having me here today. I'm one of the principals at IMC Architecture, and the applicant I reckon for this rehabilitation project at one fifty Collier Street. Actually, I don't see the presentation up on the screen.
Dominic, the presentation is on the screen. Just advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. You'll see it. Are you using a keyboard?
Yeah, I'm on a PC.
Just advance, you just use the arrow key to go forward.
I'm not seeing even the screen.
Well, you're seeing a splash page.
No, just a black screen.
Can anyone else see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Dominic, you do have control. Can you use your your mouse or your
Let's see.
Move, move your mouse?
Yeah, let's see my cursor. I don't see the presentation. Should I leave and join back again? Give me one second.
Okay, would it be better if I, if I advance the slides for you? We're running a little behind.
Yeah, sure, that's fine. I don't, I don't see the slides, but I can follow along. I have it open on my PDF, so I can just, I'll just prompt you if you don't mind. I'd appreciate that.
Totally fine. Great.
All right, fantastic. So thank you. Good morning. The subject building is an existing four-story, eight-unit residential building, built in the nineteen hundreds by architect BE Low. The building is located mid-block between Lorimer and Guernsey Street. Our office was retained by the owner who recently purchased the building, which at the time had an emergency work order and a vacate order issued by the Department of Buildings for structural instability due to a leaning wall. Our office has been working very closely with DOB to ensure the building is being properly monitored with optical monitoring and installation of temporary bracing at the interior. Over the last few months, multiple applications have been filed and approved with DOB and LPC for the permanent stabilization of the structure, which includes installing a steel frame inside the building. This structural work is currently permitted and is currently underway with, again, vibrating and optical monitoring in place. Due to the dilapidated and poor condition of the building envelope, part of our rehabilitation scope will include new facade at all exposures to include new energy-efficient wall assembly and windows. Our application for the facade rehab was initially filed as a desk review, and since I've been working closely with LPC staff to ensure the proposed rehab is appropriate and that significant architectural elements are restored. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the historic tax photo from the nineteen forties, and juxtaposed to the right is a current photo of the building. While the historic photo is of poor quality, and there is some uncertainty that the faux asphalt brick shingle shown in the historic photo at the front facade is original, the prominent cornice and entry portico are shown intact in the photo. As you can see in the current photo, the building has been stripped of most of its historic elements, and it's clad in a green wood green siding. Facade infestation are in very poor condition. The owner is therefore making a concerted effort to restore the building in addition to the permanent stabilization work. Next slide. In this next slide, you will see photo documentation of the front facade, along with some faux, along with some probe photos. At the top of the page, from right to left, you can see the first layer of the current green shingle siding. And the next photo to the left, you can see the second layer of the asphalt faux brick shingle. And the preceding image, the third layer of wood clipboard siding is visible, which we believe to be the original historic facade. Next slide. The next slide is showing some existing conditions for adjacent properties. With the exception of the corner four-story building at one fifty-six Collier, have also mostly been stripped of their historic features. Next slide, please. And the next slide is showing precedent images of the buildings built by the same architect in a similar time period. With guidance from LPC staff, we use these photos as references for our rehabilitation. Since the nineteen forties tax photo for our building is somewhat ambiguous and not clear. Again, noting the decorative cornice and portico as prominent features throughout the precedent images. Next slide. Based on the investigations and findings, we have proposed a new hardy panel fiber cement smooth siding at all exposures, including front facade, along with the restoration of the decorative cornice at the top and entry portico. Additionally, we are replacing all infestation with new wood-clad aluminum windows. Of additional significance to the design, we have added a deep decorative horizontal bending at the sill along the facade. Next slide. The next two slides show the two exposures. There's the two side exposures, which are also to be clad with fiber cement siding. The existing to-be-replaced infestation at the side exposure is not visible from the street. Did want to clarify that. Next slide. And then I can't see the slides, but let's go to the slide with the render, which might be the next one. Okay, so this, this next slide was showing the photorealistic rendering of our proposed restoration. Again, I want to note the decorative cornice and restoration of the decorative cornice at the top, which is proposed to be of a prefab fiberglass component in a darker color, along with the restoration of the covered entry portico and aluminum-clad windows in similar color. The rest of the facade is proposed in a neutral gray color of smooth hardy siding. And you can also see the deep horizontal bending below the window sill that we introduced as well. The next two slides are details of the cornice and entry portico with decorative bracket. And that's the end of the presentation. Thank you for hearing me. If you can leave the slide up with the render, that's probably the best one to look at. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we can put up the slide with the rendering if we have any questions. So Commissioners, do we have any questions at this point? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg, please go ahead.
If the applicant could describe how the color selected fitted to the colors of the district, it would be appreciated in a little more detail.
All right, so truthfully, the historic photos obviously are in black and white. So to pick up color in the precedent, not, not, not possible. I can't say that, you know, again, using just the adjacent structures on the block, they seem to not have much existing historical precedent, so not much consideration was taken there. If we, you know, we can certainly expand, expand our research to those historic properties that have, that are still intact or portions of their intact, but we didn't take any from it based on existing, existing precedent on the block.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. And Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, I have a question about the siding. If you go to L ten and you see you've added insulation, rigid insulation, and you also have the the new siding, what's the dimensional increase of that siding to the building?
Sure, that's a good question. So per energy code, the R value we can achieve in about two inches of the rigid insulation. And then there typically there will be a firing strip, and then the siding, which is of, you know, minimal dimension.
What's the total, what's the total dimension of the siding, maximum, four inches, five inches?
From the face, from the face of the building?
Yeah, five inches, six inches, what?
No, I believe we can do that in about, in about four inches maximum, given the rigid insulation requirement.
So you've added eight inches, four inches on either side of the, of the skin. The skin has increased by four inches, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
And just to follow up on that, is the plane of the window then also moved forward, or is it, will it stay where it is and just be four inches sort of deeper from the new facade? Or set, reset? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. It's a, it's a, it's a good question. I'd imagine the, the window would move proud. No, I'm sorry, the window flange would still attach to the, to the substrate of the, of the exterior wall. So it wouldn't move forward of the insulation, though. It would, it would stay at the plane of the, yeah.
Okay, yes, I do see that now. So then they, all right, and then you have a little profile that would come beyond. And one question about the colors you chose, were those based on neighborhood colors? How did you determine your palette, color palette?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think just someone had mentioned it as well, and I, I've, I'll be honest, again, we didn't take much, at least from the block. None, there weren't really many historic relevant features still remaining. So it was really an attempt to stay, to stay neutral, and, and, you know, that, that was really our intention.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, not seeing any questions at this time anymore. Questions, we'll move to public testimony. So if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. As always, we start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to others. But whether or not you signed up, please raise your hand. And I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received a couple of signups beforehand, so we'll be hearing from them. Our first sign up is Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. So Lucy Levine, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. So please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds the proposed restoration of the facade to be generally appropriate. However, the proposed synthetic materials for the siding and trim are not appropriate and should be replaced with real wood everywhere except the cornice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, we will be hearing from Christina Conroy from VSNY. So Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Landmarks Commission, middle name is still Preservation. Now, when a preservationist peels layers of applied siding off an historic building and finds original wood siding underneath, there's rejoicing. Efforts are then made to conserve and replace the historic materials to restore the buildings to its original appearance as a dignified work of architecture that contributes to its historic district. The preservationist does not remove original siding, along with layers of asbestos and asphalt shingles, and re-clad the building with today's versions of such materials. Now, the proportions, details, and materials proposed are all wrong. They have a barely passable similarity to those of the documented historical building or to any other architecture of this period. The proposal is far removed from anything that should be approved by the commission and the staff tweaking the details. It should be rejected outright. Are we still preservationists here? Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, I do not see any further hands raised. So I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board One recommends approval, and I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant. Mr. Casal, would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Hi, thank you. So regarding the materials not, not being historically relevant, again, I think the reason why we're here for the hearing was that the nineteen forties tax photo showed, you know, the, some information that was inconclusive. And so we did turn to, you know, the precedent buildings to try and piece together what we thought was appropriate here, but there really was no hard historic evidence of what this building, you know, might, might have looked like. It does seem that based on the historic photos, it was, you know, a simple, a simple facade. And we did try to restore back the, the look of the clipboard siding. We're putting back the same, you know, siding of similar, of similar exposure, just out of a more, a more weatherproof, long-lasting fiber cement panel. So from an appearance standpoint, I would say, you know, again, we, based on our, our probing and precedence, I would say it is a more long-lasting, similar facade.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, not seeing any questions. I'm going to ask you all to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. All right, Commissioner Luttrell, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And so this is a proposal to re-clad the facade and reintroduce ornament and features. The applicant has presented the tax photo, which is somewhat vague and ambiguous, and then also examples of other buildings. And I will note that in situations where the facade cladding has been altered or entirely replaced over the history of the building, the commission does not necessarily require a full restoration. If it, if the proposal was to do a full restoration based on documentation, that would be eligible for a staff-level permit. So by definition, anything that comes to us is not going to be a restoration. And the commission has routinely approved new facades that they deem, that the commission has deemed appropriate in the context of the historic district. And with respect to fiber cement, this is a material in this particular district where the commission has approved its use on the primary facade. We are always cautious about materials and the integrity of the materials. But this district is, did have and does still have a number of stripped frame buildings with aluminum siding and vinyl siding and lack of details. And over the many, you know, years and decades since it's been designated, the commission has considered alternative materials. So in fact, in this district, we have approved fiber cement board. So that, that just, I think, provides some context for the discussion. I think there are still questions about the resolution of the details and, and perhaps, you know, I raised the question about the color. That's something that may, other people may or may not have a question about. So I think we'll have a full discussion about this facade, the treatment, the energy-efficient measures. measures with the insulation and alternative materials, and then how those are executed and the details that are provided. So we'll go ahead and begin that discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I want to compliment the applicant on adding the insulation outboard of the framing because it creates insulation without a thermal break and will greatly improve the envelope. I don't have any significant issues with the materials proposed. However, I'm not sure the color really is totally appropriate, and I would suggest the applicant look at buildings of this style that may not be in the district to get a better idea of colors. And then some of the details seem somewhat awkward. And again, hopefully, the applicant can work with the staff to resolve these issues. So I I I I am a I I would be well, I am able to approve it with the notes that work work with the staff to resolve some some issues that I don't see as fully resolved.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Bland?
I don't have much problem at all with this. In fact, I think the restoration of the of the cornice is a great step forward and really changes the whole feeling of the building. I don't have a problem with with the cement board either. We've approved it, as you've noted, in this district. Maybe I'm noting that if 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 the entry door is glass, that's an unusual situation, but th- these are small issues that can be worked out with staff. I'm not an expert in the color of of buildings of this age, but it seems to me that this may be closer to something that's original than not. So it's not it's not offending me. I think in that era, the colors were were different from what we we often see today. So anyway, I think, again, staff can direct them with regard to color, but I think this is in the right frame of reference at least.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lutti?
So I I have to commend the applicant for making the effort here to bring this building back to a state that speaks to its history without trying to go back to the original. I I agree with what my fellow commissioners have said. I think the cornice looks great. I personally don't have a problem with the color because, you know, in looking at what the online, what the street looks like, there's nothing there, as the applicant suggested, to to indicate what it might have been. And there's there's an incredible mix. Be maybe it could be a little lighter. But I but I also don't have a problem. This is this shade of gray is a little more contemporary. And I think in this context, it might be appropriate. The 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 only thing that I would comment on or two small things is I don't know, it seems like the hood to the entrance seems like it's a I don't know, a little heavy and doesn't relate as much to the the line at the building at that at the horizontal line and possibly the transom is a little too big. And I would work with the staff on both of that and and anything else the other commissioners bring up.
Okay, great, thank you. And, you know, I wonder with the hood if it's because we're looking at a rendering with a shadow and it's but we can definitely look at proportions and details. All right, Commissioner Chu?
No, thank you. I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I don't see any issues with this proposal. I think the hardy board is acceptable. I would just make sure that it, because hardy board is significantly heavier, that it's properly mounted on the facade. In terms of the color, I'm okay with the colors. I think that, you know, the type of gray is something that could be looked at with the staff. And the dark colored, which is a bit of a charcoal, I think, you know, that's something that the applicant work on can work on with the staff. And I do agree that the cornice is great to bring back. It really brings back the top, which didn't exist because it was removed. So I do think this is a great improvement to what the existing facade is right now in that neighborhood. It's it's nice to see that building restored in some way.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, I I commend the architect's effort on this. I I have a couple of questions that but in terms of architecture, I think the cornice is a little heavy. I mean, I I can't imagine that the original could be that heavy, but I can I think it's reasonable. And I think the entrance is a little tight, and I think it's because of, you know, another four inches on either side changes proportions. I think they missed one one thing that would make this bu- this building really, really interesting to me and better if they put that that horizontal banding that they have at the sill, they put it at the head also. Because they showed examples of that in pre- you know, previous architects' projects. And if they did that, this would enrich this facade a bit more. But I think I can approve this because of these issues.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm I'm in agreement with the the commissioner's comments, especially Fred and Commissioner Chu. I love that they restored the cornice. And I think some of the commissioners' suggestion to work with the staff about those details are appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Lutti's statements. I think this is a great improvement in terms compared to what was there before. The applicant did a wonderful job in bringing back a lot of historical elements. You know, maybe a little bit of tweaking with the transom and the front entrance. I'm actually okay with the color, but other than that, I I can find this appropriate.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you, everybody. And I think that we have a great comments and good direction here to do an approval with modifications, really refinements, working with the staff. So what I'll go ahead and make this motion. Right, in the matter of docket number LPC twenty-three oh-two-six-six-nine-one-fifty Collier Street in the Greenpoint Historic District, a flat building designed by B E Lowe and built circa eighteen ninety-three to ninety-four. This is an application to alter the facade. And I note that the original clavoured clad frame structure highly altered prior to designation and prior to the nineteen circa nineteen forty tax photo. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed cornice and entrance hood will replicate the historic cornice and hood in terms of placement, dimensions, and general profiles. And the proposed clavoured siding will replicate the historic cladding in terms of the type of siding, dimensions, and exposure as documented by a historic photograph and physical evidence at the building. That the design and details of the original facade, cornice and trim are unknown, and therefore, the profiles and details of the proposed cornice and trim will replicate trim found at historic buildings of a similar age and style, including one by the same architect. That the placement and proportions of the trim will help support a unified composition in keeping with the age and style of the building. The the proposed fiberglass cornice hood and trim will have a painted finish consistent with the appearance of the painted finish found on traditional wood and metal cornices and trim, helping to minimize the visible differences of the substitute materials and method of installation. That the proposed color of the cladding and trim will be in keeping with the variety of colors found within the streetscape. That the proposed fiber cement siding will closely recall the historic wood siding found at buildings of this type and age within the historic district in terms of texture and details. And its painted finish will help it to closely recall wood siding. That the installation of insulation behind the new siding will greatly improve the energy efficiency of the building with only a slight and uniform change to the projection of the siding and its relationship to the depth of the windows and the doors. And that the proposed work will help return the building closer to its historic appearance and enhance the special architectural and historic character of the building and the streetscape. However, I do recommend that the applicant continue to work with the staff to resolve several of the details on the facade, particularly at the entrance and the transom and the windows, and to explore the explore installing a horizontal ban at the top of the windows as well. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on those refinements. And we'll now move to the next item.
And the next item is public meeting item number two, LPC twenty-three dash zero-nine-two-four-one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block two sixty-one, lot forty-six, Forty Garden Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an eclectic-style row house built in eighteen sixty-one, circa eighteen sixty-one to eighteen seventy-nine. The application is to lower the areaway and enlarge windows. This is read into the record at the public hearing of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. It was not presented that time and testimony was not taken. We'll begin after we open the hearing.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'm going to ask you all to unmute so we can do that. And Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to open the hearing? Commissioner Chu?
Oh, yes, so moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that? Any opposed? All right, a hearing is open.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Jenna, you now have control of the present. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name to the record, and you may begin.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jenna. I'm from the Brooklyn studio. So the project is Forty Garden Place, which is which is in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District between Jollown and Street and State Streets. Over here is the a photo of the current facade. And these are the two tax photos. This is the street view. Our the project is the one to the farthest right over here, Forty Garden Place. So, yeah, you can see it has a stucco facade with a warmer with shingles. So these are photos of the current state of the areaway. As you can see, there is a knee wall and existing an existing iron fence and gate. Our proposal is to keep these, just resurface the knee wall and strip and repaint the existing ironwork, but we do want to lower the front areaway. So we, these are more photos of the front areaway, and these are the two small windows at the basement level that we want to expand. So there are precedents on the block for sunken areaways, and these precedents can be found at lots fifty-four, fifty-three, forty-nine, fourteen, and ten. These are photos of the precedents on the block. So the photo over here is for taken from fifty-four Garden Place. It has a very similar design to our proposal, which we will show you in a bit. Yeah, also forty-nine Garden Place has a similar design, so does fifty-three. So we do have precedence on on the site, on the block, sorry. So this is the current, this is the existing plan of the front areaway. And what we are proposing to do is to lower the area that is hatched, shown in this gray hatch. So it's it's less than fifty percent of the entire area. So as I mentioned, we want to keep the knee wall and just resurface it, keep the ironwork and just strip and repaint. And then just lower this area, this hatched area. And this is the proposed plan showing new core stone steps and then new blue stone pavers with a new drain and planters on either side of the of the steps. So this is the proposed elevation of the lower areaway, showing the new windows. So there will be double hung windows that will be painted black. Other resurfacing would be done with brownstone to match the existing color. And we will maintain or recreate all of this existing ornamentation to stay in keeping with the eclectic style of the facade. And the section to the right of the page shows the core steps planter and the new gates to the to the house. And these are just existing and proposed front facades. As you can see, the the view from the street won't really change because we're keeping the knee wall and, you know, the fence of the gates. But what we're doing is just lowering the areaway and expanding the windows for a more gracious entry into the property. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu, please go ahead.
Yes, I just have a bit of a technical question for the applicant. And I'm just looking at your section where you cut through the front patio and you show that you're sinking, yeah, right there. The only thing that I just wanted to point out, and maybe you've already looked at this, is that usually in these conditions, because the grade is existing higher, the foundation isn't as deep. And as you bring this down, the exterior, we want to just make sure that you've got your your foundation is below frost line so that it's not exposed to freeze thaw type of cycle right there.
Yeah.
So I just, I I know this is just a schematic type drawing. It's not a detail. But it's just a point on, and I wanted to ask you if you looked at that, is that does that require a new foundation under there, or does the existing one give you enough depth to?
A new foundation for the front wall?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we had our structural engineer look at it, and he designed all the concrete work. And we have our foundation for DOB approvals.
Okay.
So I don't think it's it's needed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It's a tricky, tricky job. It's very surgical, these things.
And all the utilities also, we looked at the utility lines and everything.
Yeah, you may not be able to keep that little wall in front if you're digging around it. We'll see.
We'll see, yeah, it's very surgical.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Gregory to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received one sign up in advance for that. So the first sign up we'll be hearing from is Judy Stanton from Brooklyn Heights Association. So Judy Stanton, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn
Thank you, Gregory. Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support this application and think it is well done. We would also be supportive if the applicant were to make a future proposal to replace the knee wall with a full iron fence, as found today at most of the other houses in this row of nine. The houses built in eighteen eighty and designed by the Parfit brothers likely had such iron fences as their original condition. No images of the row have surfaced since that prior to the nineteen forty tax photos. But our investigation indicates that the, most of this row was renovated in the early nineteen twenties by a single investor, and we believe that this is when the knee walls were first introduced here as a modernizing and economizing feature. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, I am looking through the list of attendees now, and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board two recommends approval, and I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so I'd like to turn back to the applicant, um, and ask if there's any thing you'd like to, if you'd either like to address any comments we've heard or any other final statements you'd like to make.
No, I mean, I hear Judy's, uh, comment about, uh, having a full iron fence instead of a knee wall and a fence. Our original proposal was showing actually a full iron fence, but then because we couldn't find any evidence, LPC advised us to stick with the current design. And it's also a budgetary, uh, there's a budgetary factor to it, so, um, maybe in the future the client would be interested in, in replacing the fence entirely, but for now, I think our client wants to stick with this. But we hear two.
Okay. All right, and so it's an, it's an existing knee wall, so, and we can't actually tell you to change it, but uh, as Commissioner Chu pointed out, if you do find that during this work, it does need to be addressed, that's something we can certainly, uh, work with you on, and the owners choose to do, uh, restorative railing, we'd welcome that. All right, um, so let's begin our discussion on the proposal to lower the grade at the areaway. And create stairs in a reconfigured manner, and, uh, that would include lowering the basement level windows and new brownstone cladding on the facade there. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
I certainly would. Um, I've known this block, uh, with great admiration for fifty years. Um, it's a one-block-long street, which, um, is perhaps the most well-preserved block in the Heights. Um, and is almost like a, uh, stage set. It's so kind of perfect. Um, you learn something every day. I had no idea that these houses were, were designed by the Parfit brothers. Didn't know until this testimony, uh, by Judy Stanton today. Um, what this is, uh, this applicant is proposing is very modest indeed. And, uh, is not out of keeping at all with the rest of the block or with the rest of these houses. And I'll just also point out, as you just did, that if, if Commissioner Chu's, uh, warning or, uh, comes to pass. Um, Judy Stanton's very good, um, suggestion of support by the BHA of a, of an iron fence there. Um, might just come to pass because of the difficulties of maintaining that little knee wall. Otherwise, this is, um, almost of no consequence because it, it will seem as if nothing's happened here. So it's a very nice, very, and modest proposal.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lutfi?
I, um, oh, am I muted? No, so I, uh, am complete, in complete agreement with Fred's comments and Commissioner Chu's question. And, and I, uh, do think that the entrance is, uh, more elegant now, at which I appreciate the applicant wanting, and it seems as though this lower level is going to also get a little more light. Which, you know, I think is very important, so I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve the to lower the, lower the areaway. I think it's technically well done. And I can approve enlarging the windows because they add to the facade.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yes, um, I think it was a very well put together proposal. It's very modest, as Fred has mentioned, uh, but a very complete and clear set of drawings for us to review. I think it's very appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Master?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, same here. I think, uh, Fred said it all.
All right, and, uh, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I, I agree with my other Commissioners. It's totally appropriate and a really nice presentation.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think we can make a motion to approve it. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you mind making that motion?
I can do that. Hold on one second, uh. Uh, okay, uh, with regards to LPC twenty-three dash zero nine two four one, Forty Garden Place, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. And eclectic style row house built in eighteen sixty-one to eighteen seventy-nine, application is to lower the areaway and enlarge the window. The building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I fa- I recommend that the proposed war and find that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That there is precedent for lowered and significantly altered areaways at buildings in the row and others of the age style within the historic district. That the excavation will be in keeping with the depth and configuration of varied areaways found on the block. That the material details and designs of the proposed areaways and facade treatment feature bluestone pavers and steps and brownstone titted stucco walls, curb and base details will be in keeping with the material details and treatment of the lowered areaway and basement facade at the block and throughout the historic district. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, we can.
That the proposed windows within the enlarged basement opening will be harmonious with the proportions and configurations of windows at the build, at this building and other buildings on the streetscape. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the buildings or historic district.
Thank you, and Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
I'll call the vote, Sarah. Uh, Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu. Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes. Uh, Sarah, I don't think the hearing was closed.
Good night, didn't, I thought it closed it, okay. Well, let's do it just in case. Uh, Commissioner Lutfi, would you?
So moved.
Thank you, and Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now it's officially closed, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
The next item is public meeting item number three, LPC twenty-three dash zero nine one eight five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block ten thirty-six, lot forty-eight. Four twenty-two, Seventh Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. This is a neo-Grec style store and flats building designed by Francis Ryan, built circa eighteen eighty-five. The application is to install ductwork on the facade. This was read into the record at the public hearing of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the presentation was not made and no testimony was taken at that time. We'll begin after we open the hearing.
So we'll do that right now. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, and Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the hearing is open and the applicants may begin.
Good morning Commissioners, Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff, presenting on behalf of ownership. This item is four twenty-two, Seventh Avenue. The owner is seeking to install a visible wall-mounted HVAC duct at the fourteenth street facade and terminating in a rooftop exhaust. The ground floor at the building was occupied by a restaurant that has since closed. There's a new incoming restaurant tenant, but the space currently doesn't have a code compliant exhaust for the kitchen hood. And this wall-mounted duct, as seen on the right here, has been identified as the best feasible option after a comprehensive alternatives analysis that the building manager will review in a future slide. The building is located at the western border of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. And is located on a busy commercial thoroughfare along Seventh Avenue. This historic condition photo shows the building base has featured a food-centered commercial use at least since the nineteen forties. The yellow line seen here shows the border for the historic district. In the red circle here, you can see the existing non-compliant exhaust used by the previous restaurant tenant. The kitchen is located to the left of the residential entrance, which the residential entrance is right here. It's located on the first floor, um, right in this area. And then you can also see here that the low roof at the extension is currently occupied, uh, by a tenant deck. FDNY and health and safety codes have evolved since the previous restaurant tenant moved in. And with a change in tenant and interior improvements, the space must be upgraded to meet current requirements to continue as a restaurant use. To accomplish this, the owner is proposing to move the exhaust and relocate it here to adjacent to the fire escape, extend it to the roof with a bend around the existing wood cornice. The duct would be finished all beige to match the facade brick, and it would be a reversible installation that would penetrate the facade but not result in the removal of any historic fabric or any portions of the cornice, uh, similar to a fire escape. A to-scale elevation on the left and a section on the right show how the duct would be mounted using two brackets and with a minimum offset of three inches from the building face. The duct has been designed to be the minimum size required by the incoming tenant's kitchen equipment. The duct would terminate in a rooftop exhaust fan that would be centered towards the middle of the roof in order to limit visibility. Based on visibility studies, the rooftop exhaust would not be visible from Fourteenth Street, from viewpoint A, seen here on the map. There may be some minim- very minimal visibility from about a block away at Seventh Avenue and Fifteenth Street at viewpoint B on the map. This is seen in the top right photo and with a zoomed-in photo of the same angle seen down here in the below right photo. The exhaust would have a gray finish to help it recede from view. There would not be any visibility over the primary Seventh Avenue facade. The owners, in consultation with professional engineers and code consultants, have investigated a number of alternatives, and Ally Walker, the building manager, will walk you through these slides.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ally Walker. I'm a lifetime resident here in Park Slope and now property manager of this building. Uh, in our many months of research on this, we've looked into every option with our kitchen ventilation experts and our engineer Balti Yorcos, who is present for support with any questions that may arise. The goal was to route the duct to the back west side of the building, parallel to Sixth Avenue, which is also exposed to street view, but the interior residential entrance prohibits this. Here is a visual to better help explain our restrictions. Um, our initial hope was to run the duct through the residential hallway, through the rear apartment and up the northwest corner of the building, which ultimately is not possible due to the height of the hallway stairs lining up with code height of an exhaust fan. The height of the hallway ceiling and the height and layout of the rear apartment below the steel roof deck stand in the way as well. Um, Leanne, if you could go to the next slide. Another option we looked into was running and wrapping the duct on the exterior of the building around to the back, which would allow us to avoid the cornice altogether. However, there were a few issues with this as well. It would place the roof fan close to the corner edge of the roof, which would be much more visible from most angles. This design increases the right angle turns in the duct from essentially our planned two bends to at least five bends. Thus increasing the needed size of the duct and roof fan to accomplish the proper amount of airflow. Aesthetically, this doesn't match, or thi- this doesn't provide much visual relief as it would still be very visible from most angles and would provide the need for a much larger sized duct. We felt that this was overall a much more visually intrusive option altogether. Um, next slide, please. In addition to the previous slides, we looked into five other options. I know the time is tight, so I will mention just a few. Um, option two is routing the duct internally up the building's only existing chimney, which will not work as the chimney is currently being used for the boiler system. Option four, venting via gooseneck through the sidewalk paving was not an option since the kitchen is on the first floor, not in the basement, and code won't permit routing the vent down and then up through the sidewalk. And option seven, as a backup, we were hopeful for a kitchen air filter, also known as an electrostatic precipitator, that would not require run, it would not require running duct to the roof as it cleans and filters the airborne cooking byproducts before that air enters the exterior. Uh, unfortunately, this is not an option, uh, because it's not permitted to be located within ten feet of operable windows or doors. There are multiple doors, one of which is the residential entrance and the residential windows above, so this, uh, so the ten-foot clearance can't be achieved. Leanne, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Uh, there are a few examples of visible ducts within the historic district, including the two seen here, which are mounted to secondary facades. The one on the left, uh, was present at the time of designation. The one on the right is an LPC approved, um, two LPC-approved ducts. There are also a few examples where there was ductwork mounted to the primary facade at the time the building was designated. The photo on the left shows that, uh, within the historic district, and the photo on the right is actually outside of the historic district, but shows that um, these can be visibly not intrusive, um, with the, uh, finish color to match the facade. An example of a different type of code-required utilitarian installation for fire suppression is seen here, installed on a primary facade in SoHo. You can see the pipes mounted to the outside. And another precedent example at one ninety-nine Lafayette in SoHo Extension, there were these three pre-existing ducts at a visible facade, and two additional ducts were approved by the commission, um, further down on the facade, but these haven't been installed. That concludes the presentation. Uh, the building manager is available to answer questions, as is the project architect, uh, engineer and restaurant owner, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I think you have some questions? Or Ginsburg?
Yes, uh, just a quick question. I think there may be an issue with fire department access with the duct placement on the roof, and I just wanted to see if the applicant had reviewed that, and if not, I would encourage them to review that.
Uh, there, uh, sorry.
Please go ahead, I was gonna.
Yeah, yeah, there won't be any, um, issue. The support beams would not stand in the way of any sort of access, um, for, for anyone.
The, that, that isn't exactly what I asked. There may be a clearance issue for the fire department from going to one side of the roof to the other, but with the duct and the skylight. And I'd suggest you check it because you may need to move the exhaust fan up the page a little bit to get the required clearance, but you may have it, so I just want to flag you should look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Chu?
Um, I can see that you guys looked at options. Um, you didn't include a ground floor plan. So it's sort of hard to see what's back in, inside the building. Um, I, I could see that there was issues routing it at the, at the stairwell that, that seemed clear from your picture, but I'm, I'm already thinking that restaurant looks like it occupies the full property, and, um, I have to think there's space behind the stair that you could have sent the duct potentially to the back facade. Um, has that been explored?
Do you mean the staircase, um, in the, in the? Do you mean the staircase in the hallway residential entrance?
Yeah, I can see that you can't. It's hard to cross that.
Yeah.
I mean, behind the stair, I assume there's space and it's adjacent to the restaurant kitchen as well.
So behind that staircase is actually the property next to us? So anything we go past that staircase through would be in their property zone?
Okay, it's hard to understand your image without the plan, so...
Yeah.
I'm not quite understanding where that stair exists right now.
Balti, could you better help explain our engineer?
Balti did not accept promotion.
Okay. Well, given our circumstance, you know, we have a tenant who's like ready to jump in, but we basically don't have the full finances behind this to have a full floor plan set up since we're not sure whether or not the tenant will legally be able to occupy the space. So we weren't able to provide that, unfortunately. But beyond the staircase, I do know that the code wouldn't allow, with the height of the fan and the height of the stairs, it wouldn't allow essentially the fan to run through the staircase and the apartment above the staircase. I don't know if you can see my arrow on the screen here. But it wouldn't, if you walk up the staircase and the duct ran through, you would essentially bump your head on it, given the height restrictions. And if it ran underneath the staircase, the fan is required to be eight feet above floor level, which it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet those requirements if we ran essentially through the stair, like through underneath the staircase. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, what you just explained made sense. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, you did. You did something really wonderful to show us your analysis and to show us how you analyze the bends of this ductwork. But you didn't show us the plan. So, you know, I'm looking at this last night and I'm saying, you showed me all this information, but you're not giving me the documentation. Without the plan, I couldn't see if there was any alternate way of doing it. So, you know, I accept it. I accept that you did the right thing. But somehow, we should have a plan to make our decision, our analysis, more precise.
I understand. Yeah, with our limited resources and the uncertainty of the ability to open a restaurant here. I mean, I will say, we've had a tenant, a previous tenant, who illegally operated and didn't pay rent for two years. So we've kind of run dry a little bit with the building.
So my other question is architectural. I mean, you're painting the ductwork to match the facade.
Yes.
Does it matter? Does it, what if you made it just red or blue? It's something that's going to be removable at some point. So it could become an element on the facade that we know will be removed. Does that matter? Or we think the color adds something, matching it matches, matching it perhaps to the...
Yeah.
The visibility of it.
Okay. We feel the color would help kind of blend it with the building and kind of make it less noticeable. There's a nice tree in front of the building. We tried to be mindful to kind of group the utilitarian elements together with the fire escape and the duct. So from the Seventh Avenue view, it would kind of tucked behind, tucked behind the fire escape to help blend the elements together. And I felt painting the duct beige would really help with this and make it go a bit more unnoticed.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify. Turn it over to Gregory Colla to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received a number of signups for this item. So we will be going through those signups first. Our first signup is Hannah Carlisle. So Hannah Carlisle, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much. My name is Hannah Carlisle. I'm a resident of the building. I live on the fourth floor in apartment number five. I'm very much in support of improving the installation of ductwork on the facade of the building as I think maintaining this space as a neighborhood restaurant brings tremendous value to Park Slope. It's a neighborhood restaurant, serves many roles, but I think most importantly, it is a gathering place for friends and soon-to-be friends and creates a forum for people to talk and argue and laugh and truly creates, I think, the neighborhood that we all know and love and have for many, many years. I think storefronts can come and go, but it's the neighborhood restaurant that can best endure swings in the economy and changes in customer tastes because it is a bedrock of community culture. I fear that without installing the ductwork, the space would likely become something that is much more sterile, so office space or a nail salon. And I feel that those do little to foster the community and they also don't contribute to the accessibility of the neighborhood. As a woman, unfortunately, I've had a couple of experience where coming home late at night, I've been followed on the street or made to feel very uncomfortable by Uber drivers. And these were situations where I did not want these individuals to know exactly where I live. So I was able to kind of stop into the restaurants that were previously there. And I was really grateful to have a warm, safe, and frankly, public space that was open late that I could take refuge in, given that so much of the neighborhood does start to feel a little bit quieter and sleepier as it gets later into the night. So installing the ductwork, in my humble opinion, best preserves the spirit and intent of what Francis Ryan sought when he built this building within Park Slope so long ago, that it's a place where we meet our friends and toast to their good health and relish where we live. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. So Lucy Levine, I am promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. Without more information about how this works in plan, it is difficult for HTC to comment on this proposal. That said, we find the proposed siding for the duct in the middle of the facade to be inappropriate, and we're not convinced that the duct at this location is the only solution here. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, we will be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. So Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist now. Please state your name for the record and unmute your line. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, Commissioners, when we look closely at the tax photo, the designation photo, and the photographs which the applicant has provided of this building, we saw a small neo-Grec-style storefront, store and flats building, which has survived close to its original condition for almost 140 years. Besides the removal of the storefront and the addition of the new display window on the facade, almost everything you see is original, including an historic cast-iron corner column, the delicate neo-Grec carving on the brownstone lintels on both the ground floor and the Fourteenth Street facade and both upper-floor facades, the original band coursing and brick cladding, and every single dentil and bracket of the handsome cornice. I mean, it is close to perfect. But when we looked at the drawings and the photomontage showing the proposed work, all we saw was an ugly, modern ductwork slammed up against the facade with no regard for its historic character or the fact that it is a designated New York City landmark. This proposal should not be approved. With the help of Landmarks Commission, the applicant could continue to work with all relevant city agencies until a proposal is developed which respects this building. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, we will be hearing from Luther Hind. So Luther Hind, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Hi, my name is Luther Hind. I am a community member in the area. And I am in support of the proposed work. I could not have said it more aptly with regards to Hannah describing that it is such an important part to have another public space for the community to be able to convene and be able to feel at home with regards to Park Slope Historic District area. The proposed work, I think, is going to be, is in regards to making sure that it's safe with regards to the use of the kitchen area. It seems that the options that were presented by the property manager or the exhaustive options that were presented by the property manager are considered and that this is the least impactful present option that we'll be able to work with in conjunction to honoring the building and honoring the residents that lived in Park Slope. So I'm in favor of the proposed work and I think that the Landmarks Commission should be as well.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list now, and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six has chosen not to speak on this application and that we also received recommending approval from 22 individuals. And I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you would like to respond to some of the comments that we've heard.
Yes, I actually, now I have my engineer on the line. I think he was having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to hand it over to Balti.
Yes, I guess you can hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Sure, no problem. So we tried many options over here. I understand the concern about going around the building and discharging through the back. But it's almost impossible to discharge to the back of the building and then go through the staircase, especially as we've been discussing. The only option really, going around the building, is the only option, come and attach to the facade, the ductwork, is the only option for this particular scenario. The other option, we looked at it, maybe we can go to the backside of it, which is going to intrude to the existing neighbor and which is not going to be allowed by DOB also. And investigating all these options, I truly believe as an engineer, this is the only option that we can do on this thing.
All right. We have some questions. Vice Chair Bland?
Sorry, I need to unmute. I was unclear if this would be installed in anticipation of getting a new tenant, which is a restaurant? Or would it be not installed until that time?
We have, we currently have a tenant, a signed lease with a tenant who's waiting to put money and work into the space until they know they can legally operate.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Other questions? And I know that your engineer has done a tremendous amount of study here to look at solutions. Have you had as well a meeting with the Department of Buildings examiner just to see if there isn't a suggestion that maybe we haven't thought of? Or, as Commissioner Ginsburg brought up, that you have all the necessary clearances and that this duct would actually meet all of the codes?
We have heavily relied on both our engineer Balti and our kitchen experts over at Master Fire, who do this, have been doing this for over 50 years. So we've definitely relied on them for all the answers. We haven't officially met with the Department of Buildings quite yet.
Okay, thanks. And it is typical to go to the Department of Buildings after going through LPC. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, not seeing any final questions. I think we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And I think, you know, we have noted that we don't have a floor plan and we've also understood the, you know, that the situation that the building has been experiencing. And I think we want to do our best effort to problem-solve here with the resources that the applicant has. And I think that should any action be taken today, we can certainly ask them to continue to explore and work with DOB to find any alternative options. But before us, it seems that they're presenting that there are no other alternative options. Our staff has been working with them as well for a long period of time. And so they're proposing this duct to be installed in this location, painted out to match the facade above, which is a treatment the commission has approved in other cases where we've been, had to approve a duct that had to go off of primary facade because there were no other alternatives. And it's sort of grouped, I guess, relatively close to the fire escape to sort of keep the mechanical, the utilitarian features together. So we'll begin that discussion. Commissioner Lutsey, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So the scope here is very narrow. It's not, you know, this is a landmark building, which is wonderful. I mean, it was great to hear that it is so intact. And I'm guessing that once a tenant is in place, they will most certainly come to us about what they are doing with the facade of this building. So we will have an opportunity to make sure that whatever happens in the future makes sense. So putting that to the side for now and focusing on the narrow part of this and the fact that moving forward, the applicant is going to continue to work with staff on this, I would like to say that this seems to be very approvable to me. As, you know, with that caveat that they will continue to work with staff and they'll be looking more closely at the plan and just making sure that there isn't an alternative location. However, we have approved this kind of treatment where the duct comes out of the side of the building. It will be painted so that it is minimally visible and just not prominent. It is code compliant. It is fully reversible. And the exhaust, although minimally visible, is not visible over Seventh Avenue. So I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Okay. I haven't been on the commission to see cases like this in the past. So this is a first for me, seeing a proposal for a duct on a landmark facade. My initial reaction is negative, I have to say. I feel like, to me, the unit on the roof is less the issue. It's really more this gooseneck that's going to go over the cornice, I find, is the greatest concern to me. I totally understand the community's support of this as a gathering place and a social magnet for them. I support that. I'm just having problems with this specific solution. And I can see that it's diagrammed here. I know the reality of it, it's not going to look so clean. And I think my concern really is because the cases that were shown before, which were useful to see that there were approved ducts on facades, didn't have such a prominent cornice. There are very little cornice on that example that I looked at. And I do think that's the part that's going to really stick out to your eye. Again, I really, I do see another possibility, but it would be costly. When I look at your wall section, the first question in my mind is what if it's on the inside of the wall and just goes straight up? But that is costly. And just goes straight up. But that is costly. I understand that that is a big budgetary concern. Um. Hmm. Gotta say, I have a hard time approving this as proposed. I the duct on the the fact that it is reversible, I think, is good. However, it could also be there for a long time. Um if that's going to be the permanent solution, once approved, it's going to be the route for exhaust for the building. Um I would like to see more exploration to just know that this is really the only way to do it.
I do think, right, that um an interior solution really does impact tenants on the upper floor.
I can see that. I can see that, yeah. Yeah.
All right, Vice Chair Bland?
Um, yeah, I think uh well, to respond to Commissioner Chu's um only a few months on the on the commission. He he's got it right. I think this is fairly ghastly. Um I I don't um yeah, I'm I'm sort of with him. I think this is this is not, this is not something we'd normally approve. But there may be no alternative. I I do appreciate that uh the applicant. I'm sure he was in, she was encouraged to show us all the options so that we would understand that from the get-go. Um it's still a pretty a pretty damaging solution, I think, to go over that cornice. My 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 thought is that it should not be, we we might approve it here today, but it should not be actually built and constructed until there is an actual tenant needing it uh to be, you know, that that would need this. Uh I guess we're all hoping, the neighborhood is hoping that it's a restaurant. It seems like that's what everyone wants. That's what it's been. Uh but maybe it won't be for some reason or another, and I certainly don't want this thing, this carbuncle, to be uh installed on the outside of this building. Uh if there is to be no need for it because there's no restaurant there. So that's, I would hope that that could be part of our um of our stipulation if we do approve it.
Right, it could be tied to that, the the beginning of that lease. Commissioner Lutti, did you wanna add something?
Um, yeah, I think actually Fred's um recommendation is a good one and and I agree with that.
So tie it to a lease?
Yeah.
To a actual
Yeah, I think that's very smart.
Thanks.
I mean, just to comment on that, it it seems as if they may well have that restaurant in hand uh and and the restaurant needs to know, I understand that, that they can have legal exhaust. Um so it may be, you know, almost in hand to do it, but something could go wrong, something could change. And I certainly think it would be improper for us to approve this thing uh if it's not absolutely needed for the tenant's use.
Yep, so and actually, I don't know that they would wanna invest in installing it if the lease fell apart and the tenant didn't go
Right.
there, but it it conditional upon that.
Right.
All right, Commissioner Master?
Yes, um my understanding was that the lease was in place and that the tenant would only move forward if this was approved. Um I've done a lot of restaurant leases and I understand that one of the most difficult things is putting in the ancil system in the exhaust, especially when you have residential up above. So I'm very sympathetic with the property owner. Um I understand how tough it is. I appreciate um how much time and effort they went through in looking at alternative explorations. Um so even though this looks very utilitarian, I understand that they put it on not the primary uh facade, but that they tried to move it closer to the fire escape to kind of group it all together. Um I understand that they're not damaging the cornice and that they're putting it into the mortar so that this is removable. Um and they're trying to blend it as much as possible into the building um with a color. Um I think a restaurant is typically a fantastic tenant, not only for the community, but also for for the property owner. Um and because this is necessary in order to get the restaurant tenant, um I can find this appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So as many of the other commissioners have said, this is a somewhat painful conundrum. Uh my understanding is the same as Commissioner Masters, that they have a tenant, but they need this approved and I do understand this is code required. Uh and they've designed it to be removable. I would agree with Commissioner Bland that uh they should only start installation after they've signed the lease. Uh but it sounds like this is the only solution, so I would approve it with the stipulation that they have to have a signed lease before they start construction.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, this is uh as Commissioner Ginsburg said correctly, is a conundrum. Uh uh just uh you know, this is uh I can see the the challenges uh that uh pose for the commission. Uh but you know, I think Commissioner Master eloquently stated the uh the uh the 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 choices here. Uh you know, I in all the years, I I don't think of having seen a restaurant drill through, you know, that you go through residential floors to install that duct. I mean, it just, it's like ripping your gut out. Uh so, you know, uh and I do understand the concern, the threat, and and I think some of the stipulations uh 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 well, um you know, uh should be heated. Uh but I think this is a tough one and uh I I don't see the 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 practical choice of drilling through the interior cut of the building. I mean, there's no I mean, I I I pray for Solomon's wisdom in this case about, you know, how would you go around to to doing this and and the practical reality is such that you're not gonna go through the interior of the building. I mean, it's just, that's the the and 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 put us on a very difficult spot, but I, you know, I I can, I can um uh go along with the Commissioner Master and 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 Ginsburg.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I I can go along with the ductwork. I think the issue for me is the duct itself. If we could make that something special, you know, that says we have to have it, it's gonna be there for a hundred years. It's not gonna go away. It's not gonna be removed at some point. And if 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 the issue architecturally for me is the bend where it hits the the corners. And I'm saying, why not just push it out? Just make a straight line, just a beautiful element that comes up, doesn't touch the building, turns the corner and does what it's supposed to do. But it's a separate element, architectural element, and we say, we had to do this and we're making this as beautiful as we can and we because we need this for the function of the building and the community, but we wanna emphasize the element, not just the ductwork put in with just standard stuff, but thought through a little bit more carefully. That would be my
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. So I think um you know, it is a a difficult application and I appreciate everybody putting their thinking caps on and trying to problem solve here and I do think you know, while we don't regulate use, we also don't wanna be in a position where we limit the uses in our historic buildings and we want our buildings, historic buildings, to thrive, even in um, you know, in all neighborhoods. And um as, you know, including neighborhoods where they maybe don't have the opportunities to sort of redo the the entire uh interior of the building. And so I think that we have approved uh some of these in the past when there's been no alternative. Um and I think that they have followed those kinds of the criteria that we applied in those cases, like attaching to the mortar joint and trying to make it as discreet as possible. They're grouping it with the fire escape. Um so I think we, you know, certainly don't have, I think, unanimous support here, but I think we have enough to make a motion to approve it with the condition or the stipulation that the installation doesn't happen until after there's a signed lease. And um and maybe that they continue to work with the staff on the treatment, particularly at the bend and how it intersects and with the cornice and dialogues with the cornice. So Commissioner Lutti, would you be able to make a motion with those two modifications? And I think if I uh on uh maybe we can also add, although I think it's somewhat obvious, that as they continue to develop their D O B filing plan, that they continue to exhaust all possibilities with Department of Buildings. Commissioner? Janie, are you, I think you're muted if you're
Yeah, I just was making a little joke. I said, no pun intended, that they're gonna continue to exhaust all all possibilities.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. Okay, in the matter of docket uh twenty-three dash zero nine one eight five four two Seventh Avenue Park Slope Historic District Extension, a neo-greg style store and flats building designed by Francis Ryan and built um in circa eighteen eighty-five. The application is to install ductwork on the facade. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District Extension. I also note that the exhaust at the current ground floor restaurant space does not meet building code and multiple alternatives for creating code compliant exhausts have been explored. However, the location of the existing kitchen and its interior layout of access to residential apartments precludes exhausting through the sidewalk or interior routing of ductwork to a less visible location at the rear facade. I recommend approval, binding uh that the work will allow for code compliant uh restaurant use in the commercial space at the ground floor in the least intrusive possible manner, that the installation of the duct at the less prominent street facade of this corner building is similar to other historic utilitarian installations found at visible facades such as fire escapes and occasionally ducts or flues. That the duct will be routed to bend around the existing wood cornice and will be installed into existing mortar joints. Therefore, the proposed work is fully reversible and will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That the duct will be painted in a matte finish to match the color of the underlying brick facade, which will help the duct to blend with the background and not call undue attention to itself. That it will be seen in context with the existing fire escape at the Fourteenth Street facade and the termination of the exhaust at the roof will only be minimally visible from limited viewpoints at a distance uh and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic uh district. I also recommend that the applicant hold off on doing uh any work on this duct until a tenant is uh firmly in place. A lease has been signed, that the uh applicant continue to work with staff on the treatment of the duct, particularly at the bend and how it dialogues with the cornice. And also that the the applicant continue to work with D O B and the staff um to exhaust all possibilities on the loc- on the duct's location.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Mass, second that motion?
Second.
All right, and uh John, will you, or Mark?
Uh Chair Carol?
John, yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
Aye?
Uh Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
I with Commissioner Lutti's uh Lutti's uh eloquent additions.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed, the motion as modified passes.
Thank you. Okay, so please continue to work with the staff on that. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public meeting item number four, L P C twenty-three dash zero three zero one zero. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block twelve twenty-two, lot forty. One twenty Kingston Avenue in the Crown Heights North Historic District. This is a Renaissance revival style flats building designed by Axel Hedman and built circa nineteen hundred and nineteen oh two with a streamlined style storefront added in the mid twentieth century. The application is to replace ground floor infill, modify and create mason reopenings and install signage. Uh this was read into the record at the public hearing of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. However, it was not presented at that time and uh public uh testimony was not taken. Uh we'll begin after we open the hearing.
All right, so we'll go ahead and do that right now. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutti, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the hearing is open and the applicants may begin.
Hey commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Minosha, you now have control of the presentation and you just need to advance the slide using your arrow key.
Yes, I'm actually having a similar issue from one of the previous presentations where my screen is currently black. Um I may ask if you can um
I can do that for you.
Change my eyes for me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh good afternoon, members of the public and commissioners. Thank you for taking your time today to hear us. Uh to quickly introduce ourselves, my name is Minosha Oya. I am the project manager at Kushner Studios Architecture and Design P C. On the team, we also have Valeria Abdulina, Kanapa Chow, and finally, the principal of the firm, Mr. Adam Kushner, who are all listening in as well. Our clients' co-habs are also in attendance and will both be able to answer any questions you may have at the end of our presentation. To briefly run through our zoning and building characteristics of our job, the property at one twenty Kingston Avenue was currently a three-story mixed-use building located at the intersection of Bergen Street, a predominantly residential street and Kingston Avenue, where we can find a handful of mixed-use buildings having a commercial use at the first floor. The property is currently uh designated under zoning district R six. Um the building has been unoccupied and in derelict condition for a few decades uh when our clients took over the property. It should be understood that this is a housing project and we're working in with within what is legally allowed from us from a zoning perspective. If you could go to the next slide, please. Since the beginning of this design process, our approach to the proposed work has shifted as we are now focusing on the historical preservation of the building and its references from the nineteen forty's tax photo, as nothing could be salvaged from its more recent history as the Kingston Lounge. Having the Kingston Lounge as our existing condition, we found ourselves in a position where we had two options. Either work with the Kingston Lounge streamlined design language and aesthetic, which was difficult to do due to our change in use from commercial to residential, or look to another period of this building's rich, long history to pull inspiration and historical precedence for precedent from. Our goal is to maintain as much historical fabric as functionally possible. These nineteen forty's tax photos and the information they provide would be the foundation for our proposal and our attempts to bring the building back to its original integrity. For example, as you can see um in the nineteen forty's tax photos, uh you have the the projecting storefront and storefront designs um which was a major focal point in our investigative process and it was a significant element of the building during this time. Um if you could slide through the next couple's uh next few slides, three, four and five. Um here are some of the building and surrounding properties today. If you could go to slide five, please. Um as you can see, the current uh the property is currently vacant and has been so for many years now. Uh we believe it's important to note that before our client stepped into the picture, the building was on track uh to being demolished by the Department of Buildings due to the level of neglect and concerns for its structural integrity. In fact, uh we needed to conduct a structural analysis on the building before even starting the project to ensure that the exposed structure was still able to perform as designed. Understanding the current condition of the building and the fact that almost nothing at the exterior could be salvaged, we had an opportunity to not only show our respect to the historical elements of the building that existed, but also provide a level of revival that is in harmony with the context of the neighborhood and building elements that surrounds us. In fact, you could see many commercial storefronts similar to what we're proposing along Kingston Avenue. If you go to slide six, please. If we can look beyond the deteriorating remains of the Kingston Lounge, we can uncover subtle historical design elements that hid behind. These elements would later make its way into our proposal. Again, we did our best to take our cues from the existing building and historical images, such as the tax photos, to support our design intentions. Looking at these images specifically, we could see a few of these historical elements of the building that we found attractive and necessary to include in our effort to preserve the building. Hidden under the broken red and glass panels were historic mason, were historical masonry work still in good condition and, you know, to expose and revive. We also uncovered arched windows that were also hidden underneath the former glazing. Where the ribbon windows and finished material once lived buried a decorative column likely used for that historic projecting storefront design that we saw in those earlier nineteen forty, forty's tax photos. If you could please go to slide seven. Here we are looking at the proposed floor plans for the cellar on first floor. These floors are specifically related to the change of use. At the cellar, we have proposed storage and utility facilities for the future tenants and have included a new port and placed concrete stair to access the rear yard space as required by code. Working our way to the first floor, we have our building entrance located along Kingston Avenue. This entrance will have a staircase that takes you directly to the second and third floor where we have an existing residential use going from two units per floor to one unit per floor. Directly next to our building entrance, we have our first storefront window situated where the existing storefront was located along Kingston and Berg, along that Kingston and Bergen corner, as we saw in that nineteen forties tax photo. As we turn the corner and work our eye down Bergen Street, the inspiration of the tax photo is evident in our use of the large commercial storefronts throughout, providing adequate light and air for the habitable spaces. At the existing building entrance along Bergen Street, you can see that we have maintained the location of the existing arched openings and the wing, at the wings of the door and also maintained the location of the existing door, which is now acting as a second means of egress to that first floor unit. Moving further down our facade, we have more projecting storefront windows and you can see how they tie into that existing decorative column mentioned earlier. I can't really pan my mouse around it, but if you see it, you should see a portion of that column in the plan. As we approach the end of our property, we have a gated rear yard using materials and colors that also stay true to this neighborhood. As for safety and privacy, which are elements that are not necessary when previously a commercial space, you can also see that we've included a painted metal gate along Kingston and Bergen to accomplish and provide that, provide exactly that. If we could go to the next slide, please. I'd like to turn our attention to the elevations. Our change in use naturally omit some of the original lounge's design elements, which was better suited for a public space such as, such as the pulled back corner entrance and ribbon windows. The reality is that these features at the exterior work better as a commercial space, but do not provide, but do not necessarily work or provide an adequate function when a residential use. For example, the need for operable windows for light and air requirements. Looking at our proposed elevation at the bottom, as a few things to note. Notice how we are preserving and maintaining the playful use of brick and masonry along the dense residential block of Bergen Street. You'll see this more clearly in a later slide. But we were mindful of how the existing brick and storefront design would work together in harmony with one another. We've decided to install a proposed installation of a new aluminum cornice stretching along a majority of Bergen Street's facade, highlighting the separation of the first and upper floors. This is our attempt to pull directly from history and make another reference to the historical tax photos. Maintaining as much, again, maintaining as much of the exposed masonry and masonry openings and revealed structure along the Bergen Street facade as per the images shown previously, particularly talking about that Bergen Street entrance location. Again, notice the use of the storefront system which flows across our Bergen Street facade. Along with our proposed gate for privacy and security needs, we're also proposing a frosted film to be applied atop of these lower operable portions of the windows throughout. Please note that the existing masonry stoop was removed as it was no longer serving its function since our stair court to the upper floors are now located for the north, again, being accessed along that Kingston, Kingston Avenue facade. Instead, we've maintained this building entrance and will now serve as the second means of egress for the first floor unit as mentioned previously. Our goal is not only to pay homage and respect to the building and its existing historical features, but provide a contextual connection with the neighborhood and its typology vis a vis the fence. If we could, go to the next slide, please, slide nine. Here we have Kingston Avenue elevation. Now, even though commercial signage is not allowed in residential districts, we did want to keep the iconic Kingston Lounge sign within view. We want to make sure it's understood that we're not trying to erase history of the Kingston Lounge, but view it as a part of the one hundred and thirteen year long history of this building. An idea we came up with was to reuse the existing sign to create a hanging decorative element and place it behind the storefront along Kingston and Bergen. We felt it was more respectful to use a real artifact than create a superficial copy of something that is no longer programmatically relevant. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here are just some details of our double hung window along the exterior. We also include a color sample as a reference to the frames throughout. If we get, go to the next slide, please. With the residential use and addition of the storefront windows, there's an obvious need for privacy and security as mentioned. As we change this in our facade further down Bergen Street, wanted to make sure that the design was in tune with the neighboring residential context. As you can see in images two and three at the top, most, if not all, the residential properties along Bergen Street and Kingston Avenue have some kind of gate, entry gate or fenced condition. Not only is, was this needed, but it felt appropriate, given the cues from the surrounding context. If we could go to slide twelve, next slide, please. So again, yeah, here are some of the close-up shots and details at the Bergen Street and Kingston Avenue facades, highlighting some of the elements mentioned before. Again, notice how we are maintaining the brick and masonry usage along the dense residential block of Bergen Street by selecting a brick type and color that closely matches the existing brick. Again, the use of the storefront systems as per the nineteen forties tax photo and their relation to the existing brick and masonry facade. You'll see how our molesons for the storefront system are directly related to some of those horizontal elements of the brick and masonry facade. The revealed masonry work and arched openings next to and above the entry door along Bergen Street, which were uncovered and hidden underneath the previous glazing of the Kingston Lounge. The inclusion of the aluminum cornice along a portion of the Bergen Street facade as per the historical tax photos. And then again, yes, the decorative use of the original historical lounge signage to create an interior element, which was our way of paying respect to the more his, more recent history of the building. The next slide are just a couple of details. Typical details for our building, some of those include wall type details, waterproofing details, and floor assembly details. We could go to the next slide, please. So I'd like to end the presentation on this slide, again, showing our typical detail of our proposed storefront window system, which is our attempt to recreate the state of the building in the nineteen forties, not only in placement and location, but also design. You could see the projection of the Bergen Street storefront, which is located on the right side, given some more added depth and historical accuracy. With that said, I just want to thank everyone for their time on this matter and we are open to take any questions regarding our proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. And we do have some questions. Commissioner Ginsburg, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I, I couldn't tell, but does the ground floor unit have handicapped access into it? Because I think that's required by code. That's question one. Question two, I'm presuming the, okay, thank you. But isn't there a stair out front or am I misreading that? And you've got door clearance issues, which you could deal with a actuator. The second issue, I presume the fence is all behind the property line, but it's going to be sort of strange with, right. Did you look at putting some plantings between the fence and the building where there isn't an entrance? I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes, so to answer the first question, our ADA accessible entrance is along Kingston Avenue. We are not required to provide ADA access to the upper floors because this is a three-unit building. But all of the first floor is definitely accessible. We have our accessible bathroom and accessible clearances as required. In terms of the planters at the rear yard, it was actually something that was integrated in an earlier stage of our design and it's definitely something that could be implemented. And we're definitely open to those ideas.
Thank you. I presume you meant the front yard. The space between the fence and the building on the street. That's correct. We're, we're open to that. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Just a question, I was looking at your wall sections. Thank you for all the details, by the way, they're very helpful. I appreciate the projected wall section on the right. My question really is, what was the, what was the historic precedent that urged you to change the cornice around the bend to the corner? And flatten it? Is that's what I'm reading?
Yeah, correct. So that's actually, that's actually directly related to the.
Okay. Okay, it's hard, it was hard to tell, looked like on the elevation, it was continuous all around as a horizontal element.
No, yeah, it actually terminates, it, it, it's only a portion of that Bergen Street facade that's treated with that cornice.
Okay.
Portion with the existing commercial storefront, which was pulled from the nineteen forties is a flat, you know, aluminum profile.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But Commissioner Chu, just to, just to further that, I mean, it's, it's, it's possible that that, what you see in the forties tax photo is also not the original condition and so it may have had a corner in that section as well. It's just, just pointing out that that's sort of a snapshot from later in time and not necessarily the original.
The original, thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, thank you. In, in your research, historical research, was the ground floor ever a residence or a rental unit?
No, so the earliest CFO that we had was from nineteen forty-one and that CFO, which is the first CFO, had the space as commercial.
So before that, there was always a commercial space, correct?
To my knowledge.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any other. Yes, Commissioner Lutfi, please go ahead.
I'm just wondering why you're installing brick veneer instead of brick?
So in our attempts to mimic the existing Roman brick, we were coming to finding that the place that supplied something that was closely matching that brick size, dimension and color was a veneer system. It wasn't an actual physical brick.
You mean you could not find a brick to match the existing brick? Is that what you're saying?
We, correct, we found a brick veneer that matches.
And is that veneer only below the windows? The storefront windows?
It's below the storefront windows and there are some portions like above the door, since we had to lower the door, where we would have to implement some of that material.
All right, and did you litter a, like a metal base under the storefront, the metal bulkhead?
We did not, but that, that's definitely up for consideration. Again, I think we were using the, the historical precedents that we had and it seemed to suggest that it was brick underneath.
I, I understand that. It's interesting, difficult to match. Commissioner Lutfi, did I cut you off? Are you going to follow up?
I forgot.
Okay, maybe I'll come back to you as we move on. Okay, so let's move to public testimony. We may for that. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We received a couple of signups for this item. The first sign up we'll be hearing from is Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. So Lucy Levine, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and say your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC supports the Crown Heights North Association's position that one twenty Kingston Avenue streamlined style storefront and signage should be restored and maintained. In its two thousand and seven designation report for the Crown Heights North Historic District, the LPC described one twenty Kingston streamlined style storefront and specifically noted the building's quote, "corner entrance with its historic aluminum door, aluminum ribbon windows, colored glass banding, and historic neon signs with cutout lettering," unquote. The report went on to state that the main entrance to number one twenty, located at the center of the Bergen Street facade, has a historic ribbed aluminum surround. The LPC itself maintained in the report that, quote, "although some of the storefront's features have been damaged, removed or painted, it remains this group's standout feature." HTC not only believes that these standout historic features should be restored and maintained, but also we believe that the cultural history of the Kingston Lounge, a popular jazz club once managed by Kane Young, one of Crown Heights' earliest and most prominent black real estate brokers, should be preserved and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. So Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, good afternoon Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the proposal for work at one hundred and twenty Kingston Avenue presents some interesting problems. Unfortunately, the designate, the design being presented doesn't actually address them. The designation report for this building states, quote, "The Bergen Street facade at one hundred and twenty Kingston Avenue has a streamlined style storefront with a brick bulkhead, a corner entrance with its historic aluminum door, aluminum ribbon windows, colored glass banding, and historic neon signs with cutout lettering. The main entrance to number one hundred and twenty, located at the center of the Bergen Street facade, as has a historic ribbed aluminum surround, although some of the storefront's features have been damaged, removed or painted, it remains the group's standout features," end of quote. The storefront so carefully described in this report is a significant feature. One option therefore is to restore it. The applicant hasn't provided a photo that shows what it looked like at designation, but we were able to find a more recent one, which we've submitted with our written testimony. The LPC has others which could probably all be used for a restoration project. We believe that if the commission found the streamlined storefront too damaged to make restoration feasible, another appropriate alternative is to restore the masonry cornice above the large display window and install storefront infill based on historic storefronts still in place on buildings of this age and type. These would typically have painted wood framing with bulkheads and transoms with the largest display windows set below a sign band facing Kingston and smaller windows between masonry piers on Bergen. The heads of the windows would align with the heads of the windows adjacent to the entrance to the upper floors on Bergen. But instead of either of these appropriate alterations, the applicant is proposing to cut large openings which. large openings which don't relate in size or detailing to any original building features and install minimally detailed storefronts. The lintels would be set directly under the existing cornice line. A new flat aluminum cornice would replace the missing masonry section of the Kensington facade. The storefront framing, the aluminum cornice, and all the windows on the upper two floors would be painted or finished in anodized bronze. Well, all these changes are unacceptable and must be denied. Finally, the proposal to install the existing Kingston Lounge sign inside the display window at the corner will eliminate its protection because it will no longer be an exterior feature. It could be taken down and discarded at any time. I mean, this must also be denied. Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list now and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Eight recommends denial and we also received a letter from Crown Heights North Association. And I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Yes, I mean, um, you know, the, all, all comments heard and, and thank you, thank you for your feedback. Um, you know, as mentioned before, the condition of that streamlined effect just wasn't salvageable. Um, and you know, we just, we elected to go with the 1940s route and we, we think it proposed a stronger proposal, um, and allowed us to, um, have direct reference, um, for this, uh, goal of creating this historical preservation and, and utilizing as much historical precedence as we can.
All right, do we have any questions? Final questions? And just turning to the applicant, was there something else you wanted to add?
Hey there, this is Dan. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, so I would just add that, you know, this building has been sitting here for decades and decades and decades and basically falling apart. We're acquiring the building with a residential purpose as by right. Um, and yeah, just, it really, it doesn't work for the model. There's this juxtaposition with the, what was the, the Jazz Lounge's design against the more traditional, original brick on the upwards part of the building. And it really just doesn't work for our model. Um, so yeah, I think, I think we've done everything in our power to be creative here and to work with the members of, of the commission at the, at the staff level. And we will continue to do so as we, we go through execution if so, so approved. So that's just what I would add.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, and, um, I'd like to actually just turn to our Deputy Counsel, John Weiss. Um, if you're with us, John, to just talk a little bit, or, and Mark, sorry, didn't hear, hear, either one of you. Um, two things. One, we've heard testimony about this sign and I think it might be worth explaining to the Commissioners, um, what our role is with respect to existing signs and whether we can compel people to keep them on the outside of their building. I, I think you all can explain it better, but I think we have not historically treated signs as significant in and of themselves. Um, and if a new tenant is in place, I think we don't have the legal authority to compel them to keep a sign that isn't their sign, right? So that's sort of one question, if you could just kind of clarify our role on that. And then, uh, John, I thought maybe you could give some history on the commission's involvement with this building and prior special permit.
Okay, look, I'll, I'll just address the first thing and then John can fill in that. That, yes, that you're correct. Chair Carroll, that the, the commission does not have the authority to require a new tenant to display and advertise, you know, a form, you know, a former um, or maybe even existing tenants', uh, old sign. So, um, that's generally, we have not been acquiring that. Sometimes we make people, you know, create a new sign that is evocative of, of the historic sign that, that, uh, uh, may have some meaning for various people, like we do with Guardian Life and things like that.
Right, and RCA building?
RCA, but there's, there's a number of cases where we've, where we've said, look, use the same font, use similar colors, you know, design, um, but, you know, but you don't have to, you know, keep the historic sign.
And in this case, the applicant is proposing to keep it on the inside?
Yeah.
And I, I should note, this is also a residential district. The prior owner actually had been seeking a special permit to keep the sign, uh, in the resident, residential district. So there are also zoning implications for a sign at this location as well. And as to the condition of the building, the commission's enforcement and legal staff were very aware of this uh, building as demolition by neglect. We'd issued a failure to maintain violation some time ago. Uh, we, and we worked very closely with, uh, DOB engineers, including Tim Lynch and other engineers at the forensic engineering unit on the condition of this building. Uh, so we were aware of this, uh, building and we've been watching the, uh, owners as they are preparing to, uh, make repairs to it.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions, either for the applicant or staff? All right, I'm gonna ask you all to unmute so we can move to close our hearing. Commissioner?
You people?
All right, Commissioner Bland, would you make?
Yes, so move.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we'll, uh, now begin, our hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, so this proposal, um, as John said, well, this building, as John said, is a building that we've been watching and I think that we definitely want to support some restoration work and a new use here. And so the application before us today is for new, uh, storefront infill and, uh, new brick veneer, uh, beneath the storefronts and at, uh, entry where it's being lowered. And the removal of modern steps to create an at-grade entrance and some signage. And so we'll go ahead and begin that discussion now. Commissioner Chu, would you be comfortable starting this one?
Sure, thank you. Okay, so, um, let's start with the cornice. Um, I find that the transition is, is abrupt on the cornice. I, I feel like the cornice, the two styles, um, don't work together. I think that one of the great things about these corner lots is that you can wrap a corner and I'd like to see potentially the applicant work with staff to look at those profiles. One seems very ornate and the other is very plain. And I think there might be something um, a little bit in between there that could run around the corner. Um, it looks like you have room behind the fire escape ladder there, so that shouldn't be a problem. Um, the other comment I have is, uh, I do, uh, I did not notice, but I, I think, uh, Commissioner Luffie's comment about the soap bricks under the window, I do have a problem with that. Um, I think that, you know, the soap brick is really just a veneer piece. It's not true fabric that is intent here to match what was, uh, an existing fabric. And I would urge the, the, uh, applicant to maybe look at other options to that. Um, matching it, I understand, can be problematic, um, in terms of finding full size that match. But if you can find a soap that max, matches, there may be a, a full Roman brick that also matches if you want to go with that direction. But I would be open to seeing other proposals there. Um, the storefront in general, I feel on, on these facades, especially on, on the Kingston Street and also here on the Bergen, the, they feel, if I look at the window openings above and these, in, in the, in the, in the previous design, what's above shown here of the lounge, I feel like there's a scale, a site, scale issue that could be worked on here. Um, they seem overly large and that's probably because that band was eliminated and it was raised. I think that there could be more study just in the elevation and articulation of all those storefronts and especially as it wraps the corner here of the lounge, uh, existing or the previous lounge corner. Um, let's see, I, I do commend the, the accessibility. I can see now that there are ground floor entries. I think that's a very positive thing. Um, and let's see, can you go to the Kingston elevation just for a minute? Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think as I mentioned before, the proportions of this entry feel strange in relation to what is above and that I think it can be studied and improved.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right. Uh, Vice Chair Bland?
Well, first, any building that is under the watchful eye of LPC, uh, as a demolition by neglect, we should praise the heavens that, uh, it seems to be saved. So I think I want to start with that because I have spent forty years or more observing two buildings in Brooklyn Heights that uh, are on that watch list and one has been resolved and the other has not. I think this is a very significant and, and problematic area for, for, um, LPC um, because of the problems involved with actually taking over a building uh, from an owner, uh, et cetera. So it seems as if I just want to go on record as now that doesn't mean we should be, uh, too easy either on what's appropriate. Um, and I think Commissioner Chu has just outlined many of the issues. I think, I, I would think all of them could be handled at staff level. And I would agree with most of what he said, so that's, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, um, I think the lower level facade needs some work. I mean, the, the amount of glass, the openings are excessive, I think. And I think there could be a better relationship between the second and third floor and the ground floor. And that could be done with the help of staff. Um, uh, the, the, I'm a little upset with the toner ratio of the lounge, but maybe there's a piece of signage that could be put up that would imply that there was something there at one point that was the community loved. And I, I can see that. I know that's not our jurisdiction, but it would be a good design idea. Um, if you go to the next facade, the Bergen Street facade, um, you see the corners, is it, they, the glass portion is so extensive, it, 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 they seem, there's, it's not organized enough for my taste. It, it could, it could be resolved in a better facade. And what's the final one? I, uh, the ground floor infill, the signage, I think I've covered all. And I can approve it if, if the, if the staff would work and resolve some of these uh, facade issues.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letty?
Um, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, a lot of the comments that my fellow Commissioners have made. I'm actually gonna start with the last one that, um, we heard about in public testimony and Commissioner Jefferson brought up as well. I, I also feel like there is, uh, there needs to be a better, uh, dialogue between, uh, the lower windows and the upper floors in terms of alignment. When, when I look at it, them on this page, I just, when I look at the, uh, storefront, I feel like there's a real disconnect, almost like it's just been sort of laid over. So, uh, I think that has to be revisited and I also am a little concerned about the materiality. It's going to be aluminum and I think the quality of aluminum, since this is the base of the building and, uh, the upper floors are, you know, actually quite lovely. I think it needs to, uh, it needs to have some integrity. Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Chu's comments about the, uh, the transitions in the cornice. And I absolutely feel like there should be more, uh, investigation about, uh, the brick veneer. I mean, I, I just don't think that it, I don't think it's gonna look good and I, I personally don't think it's acceptable. So I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this, uh, this, um, I, I, I sort of feel like the applicant should come back. But my, you know, we'll see what everybody else says. It doesn't, as, as we continue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So first, I want to, second Commissioner Bland's comments, uh, it's really great to see the applicant coming in to take a derelict building and restore it and reuse it. And also, it's somewhat problematic that the current zoning doesn't allow for a commercial use, which is what the ground floor had been used for. Uh, I really agree with all the other Commissioners' comments. Hopefully this could be worked out at staff level. And the one other thing I'd add is I'm worried about the space between the fence and the building just becoming a place for people to throw garbage. So I was suggesting maybe some planters or something else just to somewhat fill that in. Uh, but I think this could be approved, sending it back to staff to work out all the issues that the other Commissioners have raised.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yes, um, I want to commend the applicant, um, for taking, undertaking this, this major project, um, of a building that has been vacant, derelict, and in danger of being demolished. Um, I'm so pleased that they're taking this and converting it into residential use. Um, and I applaud their efforts to recall kind of the historic, um, elements of the building. Um, in terms of the little, uh, you know, tweaks, uh, that, um, other Commissioners have mentioned, um, I agree with all of the previous statements. And I would say that if they can work with staff, uh, to, to get that done, um, that would be the optimal solution for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I think, uh, I echoed the Commissioner Ginsburg and Fred's, uh, comment earlier that, you know, it's good to take a derelict building and, and put it back into use. Uh, I share the same concerns as the rest of Commissioners. As you can see, uh, the, the, this is huge disconnect between the base and the upper floors. The proportion is off, the materiality, the details. Uh, and so I leave it to the, the majority to decide whether you want them to come back or you think that, that they can work with the staff.
Okay. All right, and I do, I want to thank you all for your comments. I think they were actually very specific and very direct. And I also want to thank you for your confidence in the staff. I have great confidence in the staff as well. Um, but I do think we will bring this one back. I, uh, there, there were many comments about the opening sizes and the relationships and I think some of those, um, do need to, uh, there are some structural issues that need to be considered to actually evaluate the correct sizes and, uh, the question about that, I think, will be maybe still open for some of you. So I think we will keep it open. We'll ask the applicants to work on the scale and proportion of the window openings, particularly how they wrap, the connection, uh, or the continuity of the cornice as it wraps the two facades. And the materiality of the brick veneer, which I think for many is an issue and, uh, ask you to explore some, uh, brick or other materials that would be, uh, more appropriate here. And so with that, we'll take no action and we'll ask you to come back when you have, and you can continue to develop your, by proposal and we'll see you back when you're ready. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that, um, I think is gonna conclude our morning session. We are almost an hour behind schedule. So we will break for lunch and we'll return promptly at 1:35. And we will resume with the two items that we didn't get to this morning, which are items number, public hearing item number one and public hearing item number two. And, and then continue with the previously scheduled afternoon items. So we'll ask all members of the public to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that you don't have technical difficulties when you want, if you're planning to return. And we'll see everybody at 1:35. Thank you.